June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, peripheral town plan zoning, uh, meeting. If we will start with, uh, meeting minutes from May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. May I have a motion on the item?
Move to approve.
From Commissioner Francis, second from Commissioner Berman. Anything to discuss? Commissioner Francis?
No.
No. Okay. Commissioner Berman?
No.
Anything else from the commission? Where can we put it to, uh, excuse me. Uh, Commissioner Ford is not present, he's on his way. So, who is in, who's up, um, Ms. Harrigan? Uh, Mr. Leahy?
I think it probably would be Mr. Leahy. If he's ready.
Commissioner Leahy, are you, uh, up to speed on the minutes? Or should, uh, Commissioner Kit step in? Commissioner Leahy?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that, yes, it was just, uh, double muting and sounding a little difficult. Yes, could you go over the minutes for me?
Now, are you, are you up to speed with the minutes from the last meeting?
Why not?
Okay, so Commissioner Kit will sit in for that then. Um, so that gives us seven. Any other, any thing to discuss on the minutes? If not, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, so minutes are unanimously. Next, application for recommendation to public hearing, fourteen sixty, Post Road. Special permit application of James Morris for a vestibule addition to establish a rooftop dining area in the Center Design District. Uh, will it be Mr. Went or Ms. Harrigan? Mr. Went?
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
I can.
Okay, good evening. Uh, Jim Went, for the record, um, this, this property is on the corner of Sanford Street and Post Road. It's the former Beef Fresh Space. A new restaurateur is looking to establish a rooftop dining area. They have no room for a physical outdoor patio other than the roof. Um, and it does require a, a small addition, um, and we are recommending that to public hearing.
May I have a motion on the item?
Move to public hearing.
Move to public hearing by Commissioner Levy and seconded by Commissioner Francis. Anything to discuss?
I have a question for Mr. Went.
Commissioner Braun?
Hi, this is Kathy Braun. What's the height of the building now and what stories and will this? Is this generally around the same height as the adjacent buildings? I'm trying to picture where this is exactly or what this is exactly.
It's, it's presently a single-story building. It's a brick building on the corner of Sanford Street and Post Road. Uh, the adjacent building next to it is two stories, uh, but this piece, um, this building is a single-story building.
And it would be in concert with the abutting properties?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by that, but it's, it's, it's opposite Sherman Green, basically.
Out of character with the abutting properties.
Yeah, you'll see, you'll, you'll have an opportunity to, to see the, the, the plan and, and the surroundings, the, uh, um, it's a one-story building, um, and they're not, it's a flat roof presently.
I'm sorry, this is just a recommend for public hearing, I apologize.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Kit, why don't you stick with us because we're gonna need you for old business after this? Um, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Count seven hands, so motion to move to public hearing passes unanimously. Next matter is old business, twelve fifty-two Pequot Avenue subdivision and coastal site plan application of Polly Berry and Richard Clarida for two lots in an R-three zone. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, um, this property is in the R-three zone and they're looking to spin off an additional lot. Um, both lots are well in excess of the minimum lot size in the R-three zone. It meets all of the lot front and, and lot area requirements of the district. Uh, there is a coastal site plan review application here with a coastal planting plan and it is our opinion, and you do have a staff report, uh, from the public hearing, that this proposal is consistent with coastal management policies and that was also, um, confirmed by a referral to, uh, from, uh, the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection. So beyond that, um, I have nothing further unless there's any questions of the commission.
Thank you. May I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Levy?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Second from Commissioner Francis. Commissioner Levy?
Um, I'd move to appro, I'd approve this. Uh, two lots meet the, uh, uh, requirements in the R-three zone. Uh, it's consistent with the coastal management policies and accordingly, uh, I would approve it.
Thank you. Commissioner Francis?
Nothing to add.
Commissioner Berman?
Just wanted to ask staff if there were any conditions of approval of the coastal site plan application that you recommend.
I don't recall anything specific. Um, um, Emmeline, if, if you can recall if there's any specific recommendations from your report, but I don't think there's anything that's of, of great substance.
I think if I could just add to that, I think we added some of those conditions in the staff report that was provided such as the project needs to meet the, you know, flood plain management requirements, the soil erosion and sedimentation controls should be in place for the duration of construction, um, so the standard ones that we usually require.
Should we add that to the motion or is that gonna be already in the motion?
Those can be, um...
Added.
How did we do it last time? I think they can be added.
Yeah, I think that's how we've done it in the past.
Recommended by staff.
Commissioner Levy?
I'll amend my motion to include the, uh, recommendation, staff.
Commissioner Francis?
Yes.
Uh, so amended. Any other, uh, comments from the commission? Yeah, I saw no reason to deny, so I thought that was pretty simple and straightforward. Any, let's put this to a vote, excuse me. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Count four hand, uh, excuse me, seven hands, so passes unanimously. So, moving on to our public hearing, I will call together, um, are we ready for public hearing? Let me ask you that, because I think, uh, Attorney Smith is...
The train is slightly delayed by traffic.
Yes, that's what I thought.
But perhaps we can take this time to, um, discuss with the members of the public how we, given that we're in a different room, how we'd like for public hearing to proceed in terms of where to go and all of that.
Yeah, so we will do that. Um, does anybody from the applicant have an ETA for Attorney Smith? If you don't, that's fine. Okay, and I think, uh, after we give, uh, some public, uh, comments, uh, about how to, how we're gonna move forward, I think a recess would be fine because no reason for us to be sitting here. Uh, Ms. Harrigan, did you have, did you wanna start or you want me to? Please, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so if we just could, we're in a, we're in a new room for us, uh, for public hearing and so we have to kind of utilize the equipment that we have to make sure that everybody is informed as well, we can hear you in case minutes are requ, transcripts are required afterwards. So what we're gonna ask folks to do who are in the room, if you'd like to speak during the public hearing item, we're just gonna ask you to line up adjacent to where the door is and we're gonna ask you to be in this area over here so that the camera can see you and there's a microphone there so that the microphone can also pick up all of what you'd like to say to the commission, okay?
Thank you.
And then I think...
So, yeah, we will, we will have the applicant present its, uh, initial presentation. Public comments will then, uh, after they're done with their presentation, then we will have public comments. Uh, we will give, uh, priority for the people in the room as a courtesy since they are out here. Uh, people that are in, uh, through, online remotely will sign up in the chat, we will discuss that later. Um, you will have as much time as you need to do, to talk about your public comments, uh, for this application. We ask you to keep it germane. Um, there's a potential that, uh, could be a lot of public comments, so we'd ask you to, uh, keep it as concise as possible, although we won't put any deadlines or time constraints at this point. Uh, we'll go over this again in public co, when public comment begins, but unless I'm missing anything of substance, why don't we adjourn, uh...
Oh, I still have plenty of information.
Sure.
Sure, I'm sorry. I just wanted to see, do you think we'll be keeping the public hearing open?
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
So, yeah, as I've said in the beginning of the year, for eight thirty G applications, I, I would like to go forward to at least keep public comment open, at least, excuse me. For eight thirty G affordable housing applications, I would like to keep public comment open at least one hearing, to extend into one hearing for both the applicant and for both the public. To understand the application, understand the standards of law at issue, um, and I think the extra time, so we're not opening and closing for one session. The extra time is beneficial to the commission, to the applicant, and to the public. So I do not ex, I do not expect to close this hearing tonight, even if I had wanted to, uh, but I won't, uh, because it's an, I, hopefully a new policy that will work well for eight thirty G applications going forward. Anything else?
I just wanted to say members of the public will welcome to submit comments to, um, the TPZ by, uh, email as well and you can, uh, you can speak in public as well as submitting in writing, uh, or you can do either.
And we get those and we read them. Uh, with that, we'll adjourn, um, at least ten minutes, um, maybe more depending on Attorney Smith. Uh, at least ten minutes at this point. I would pause the recording so, uh, we, people can talk and freely, not have to be picked up.
Okay.
Thank you. Application of fifteen, Unclea Road LLC to amend section twelve point three of the zoning regulations. The Center Design Business District proposed new section twelve dot three dot twenty-nine inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component. And again, fifteen Unclea Road zoning compliance application of fifteen Unclea Road LLC pertaining to the construction of a sixty-three residential building pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes. Attorney Smith?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, professional staff, system planner Harrigan and town planner Went. Hope you're feeling well. Uh, for the record, my name is Chris Smith. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Alton Pearson and I appear before you this evening on behalf of the owner applicant, fifteen Unclea Road LLC. Um, I'm accustomed to standing and addressing the commission, so is it, oh, I, I should sit, Emmeline, and...
If you feel like standing, um, that's fine. I'm sure it won't be a problem.
I, I, um, as a housekeeping matter, I do have notice letters that I did send of the filing of the application to, uh, Aquarian and Connecticut Department of Public Health. Even though we're not in a designated watershed area, I tend to send the notice letters out anyways. And that was sent, they were sent out within seven days of filing the application back in April. And I do have the green cards by night.
Thank you.
Without a podium, maybe I'll, I'll sit.
You'll get used to it, I promise.
What I would like to do, uh, is introduce the members of the team, uh, with me here this evening. We have Jason Edwards, uh, J. Edwards Associates LLC. Uh, we have Larry Edwards, a professional engineer of J. Edwards Associates LLC. I take it Larry is remote?
Yes.
Uh, we also have John Gedds, architect of Gedds Associates, Inc. Dave Sullivan is our traffic expert with now SLR, formerly of Mylona McBroom. Uh, Dave is in, uh, Town Planner Went's position, so he was not able to be here this evening, but he will be calling him remotely. Um, and finally, we have Joseph Berstig who had, uh, he unfortunately is unable to be here except remotely as a, uh, back issue. So at the outset, I would like to indicate that we do have a two-part application for the commission as was read into the record relative to the, uh, notice. And what I'd like to do is, uh, Ms. Harrigan, if we could have the aerial. And we have fifteen Unclea is in the purple-blue, it was, it's back. And we have to, I, I think everyone is familiar with it, to the, uh, south, we have the Post Road. To the east, uh, I think everybody can see it, is, uh, Unclea. Sanford is to the west or to, to our left and to the north, we have the railroad station. And what is proposed, uh, for the, um, for this site today, this evening, it's subject to the application and, uh, Ms. Harrigan, if we can go to the, uh, next slide. Uh, we do have a sixty-three unit residential community that's been proposed and it's, as indicated in the, uh, public notice, that the, the application, this is a two-part application, uh, both have been submitted pursuant to and in compliance with section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes, which I think you're familiar with. It's entitled the Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals Procedure whereby thirty percent or nineteen of the units are, will be offered to individuals or families at either the eighty percent or the sixty percent median income levels as provided by section eight dash thirty G. And then finally, the proposal, uh, involves a deed restriction whereby the property and this community, residential community, would be deed restricted for a period of forty years to ensure, uh, the aforementioned, uh, housing opportunity percentages. Uh, the affordability component is provided by section eight dash, uh, thirty G. You can go to the next slide, please.
Sorry, I just realized I was not sharing that with everybody from home.
Too bad we can't just do it from here, but I understand. And again, we do have, it's a two-part application and the first component does involve a zone text amendment to amend your Center Design Business District regulations that are located within the Design Business District provisions. And this will provide for the proposed residential community, subject to site plan or zoning compliance approval. Uh, the second application is indeed a application for zoning compliance approval for the proposed sixty-three unit residential community. Uh, the format for our presentation this evening for the commission, first, we will address the text amendment and then we'll address the zoning compliance application. Uh, I will be addressing the zone text amendment and provide an overview of the proposal. We will then hear from Jason Edwards and Larry Edwards concerning the site development proposal, which is the, uh, second part of the application for, uh, the application for zoning compliance approval. Uh, after Jason and Larry, the Edwards, will hear from John Gedds as to the building design components and Mr. Gedds is with us now. And after John, after Mr. Gedds, we'll hear from our traffic engineer, Dave Sullivan, again of SLR. And then finally, we will hear from Joseph Berstig, who is our fire safety expert. So at the outset, dealing with the zone text amendment, uh, I do have, there are three documents along with the PowerPoint presentation that I may make reference to. They were filed with the commission with the application. Uh, the first is my cover letter, it's a summary letter and that's dated April sixth, two thousand twenty-two. I do have the, uh, text amendment, looks like this, uh, that was submitted as part of the application. We'll be walking through that shortly. And then finally, I have the affordability plan, uh, that I'll touch upon in my portion of the presentation. Again, we're, we'd like to do the zone text amendment first and, uh, the certificate of zoning compliance. And I, and I apologize, I should have done this at the outset with the chair and I meant to, it's there, uh, that, just confirming that, it's my understanding we are having a single hearing to address both of the, uh, applications.
Yes.
Which is what, what we've done in the past.
Yes, and we're gonna need, I think, to talk about the, normally, we blend them, but I think we need to do the zone, the text amendment first, separate it out, but we will be having one hearing.
And I, and I will do that. And I know how the commission feels about text amendments associated with eight thirty G applications, but, uh, the statute, uh, does allow it to be, any applications to be filed in connection with a site development proposal. Uh, so we do have that component. And again, I'll, I'll walk you, um, I will be presenting that to you. And then after that, you'll hear from the rest of the team, which will involve what would be typically the normal site development plan, uh, explanation to the commission with the, uh, site-specific development proposal. But at the outset, again, with the, uh, with the text amendment, uh, I, and I, and I guess, I, I know in the, um, in the prior matters that I've had, uh, with the commission with eight thirty G, and it's not so much for the commission. I know that you may have one or two new members, uh, but mainly for the, uh, the public. Um, and I've been asked to do this before by your, uh, professional staff and that is just to, uh, indicate that we, eight thirty G is a remedial statute that was, uh, passed back in the late eighties and essentially it provides that if an applicant comes in with a residential proposal where thirty percent or more of the dwellings or units are deed restricted with a, an affordable component, I'm not gonna get into the specifics, that essentially if, uh, a local commission, whatever the commission would be, whether it's planning, a TPZ in this case, uh, or a ZBA, were to deny an application or to impose what is, uh, considered onerous conditions that might affect the viability of the proposal, uh, then the commission has the burden on, on, with an appeal. Uh, and essentially, the test is that the commission can deny an application or can modify it as it sees fit, sees fit, essentially if the commission finds, based on the substantial evidence of the record, uh, that the proposal, uh, results in an adverse impact to what's called a substantial public interest and, uh, that outweighs the need for affordable housing. So you may hear me make reference to the, uh, substantial public interest as we go through our presentation, uh, tonight and, and during any rebuttal and follow-up, uh, with the commission and the citizens responding to comments. Uh, and then I'll be, I'll make, uh, reference to, uh, the need for affordable housing very briefly. That's, that's covered in the submission letter. So that's a, a very brief overview of section eight dash thirty G. We could, we could have a seminar that could take two or three days just to talk about it if you wanted to, but I'm sure you don't. But what I would like to do at the moment is just walk through very briefly, uh, the, uh, text amendment, uh, that has been submitted. And this is, uh, a proposed new section to the permitted uses in your, um, in the, uh, Center Design Business District Regulations. And what I, again, uh, it's this document here that was submitted with the application. I'll just very briefly go through it for the commission. It's not unlike many other, uh, text provisions that you do have and it does provide for, again, as a permitted use, it's number twenty-nine under, uh, permitted uses in the Center Design Business District, which does appear in your section twelve dash, or twelve point three. So this is proposed new, twelve point three twenty-nine to follow what is your current, your last one in the, in the, uh, section is twelve point three point twenty-eight. So under intent and purposes, uh, the purpose is to provide for a, an affordable housing, a residential community that does comply with section eight dash thirty G. Uh, any application that is submitted under this section does have to be an eight thirty G application. So, uh, I know that there was a, an overlay that was generated, uh, by your professional staff, your planning office, indicating where this could be applied to on various properties and that may be the case. But again, any application that would be submitted, uh, pursuant to these provisions would have to be an eight thirty G application. So if they came in, if somebody came in with an eight thirty G application, they would essentially, could write their own regulations to fit that proposal. But it's, um, it's not opening up the door to this being used in, on properties as designated in those, uh, circles, uh, in those designated areas that was prepared by staff. It certainly can be used there, but again, somebody would have to file an application that does comply with eight thirty G and, and they could, they write their own regulations anyway. So they, they don't need this, but we feel that, I feel that my client does, uh, because it does, uh, provide regulations that would govern this community going forward in time or otherwise they, it would be essentially a non-conforming use going forward, even if you were just to apply it. So that's why we have it and it does provide some finality for a lender, uh, who's lending, uh, for purposes of...
Just a quick question though, because I understand this. We, we have this issue with the previous pla, uh, uh, previous litigation. It's currently pending. Um, so it kind of took, this is new for us as far as having eight thirty G standards applied to regulation amendments. But I wanna understand, make sure I understand what you said though. If we approve these regulation amendments as stated, at that point, once they're approved and part of our regulations, future applications could just be site, regular site compliances pursuant to these regulations, not eight thirty G applications?
No, they, they, they would file an applic, if, for example, if they wanted to comply with everything in here, all these restrictions that are built into this, which is really tailored for this proposal, for this property. But if they wanted to comply with all these provisions, they would come in with a, an application for a zoning compliance.
Yes.
However, it would have to, whatever they're proposing would have to comply with eight thirty G.
Okay, so that's...
Wouldn't be a marketing...
Okay, no, but that's somewhat new to me because, as I said, we were, this is different for us for, uh, previous application here and that was not my expectation or understanding going forward here is that if we adopted these regulations under this eight thirty G applica, uh, standard, anybody coming after you would not have to do an eight thirty G application. They would just be doing a regular, regular regulation, well, excuse me, regular site plan application per our regulation D.
Right, but, uh, these, Mr. Chairman, if you look at the last sentence through, in the bottom of page one, it says, and, and this is, uh, you might be referring to the, um, that litigation involving the Beach Road application and, um, Judge Berger did address this issue in part when it was raised by counsel and I've been saying all along, it's essentially, this is what's, the same language is in that one.
Okay, can you read it, please? Thank you.
So for the record, it states at the bottom of page two, and this is under intent and purposes, quote, workforce or...
Just a little bit, I'm having trouble hearing it down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's not, that's gonna be for the, uh, record, I don't think, that's not gonna, that's gonna broadcast it in this room.
Oh, okay, I'll try to...
I don't think, right? No, yeah.
Is it, is it for this one, ma'am, or? I'll, I'll try to...
Do we have a microphone for this room? Just that one?
We're dealing with the limitations of this new space.
I wonder if he tilted the table, then would he lose the camera?
Uh, where is the camera?
I'll, I can, I can, I...
Does it help if we put him in line with, um, uh, Commissioner Kit's, so he's somewhat facing the audience too, or will we lose him in the camera?
No, he, he would be in the camera. He's closer over there.
I don't, I don't feel that I have to be in the camera, but if that works.
No, I think, I think they, we probably want that, but if you can at least just somewhat angle yourself facing, uh, Commissioner...
If I were sitting where Jason is, would...
Just so he's...
Can you still see me in the camera?
Yep.
Okay. Brother from Commissioner Braun. And I apologize, I'll try to speak a little...
Just so you're kind of at least facing them, well, to some extent.
Okay. A little better, maybe, hopefully? I'll do it. I'll try. So, uh, in response, uh, Mr. Chairman, at the bottom of page two of the, uh, zone text amendment, it does state as follows, quote, "Workforce or affordable housing or mixed income dwellings which fully satisfy the intent requirements and purposes of section eight dash thirty G must be part of any housing proposal submitted for approval pursuant to the provision of this, provisions of this section," end of quote. Uh, so, and again, it does spell it out later that you have to file an application, uh, pursuant to eight thirty G. So it doesn't, uh, I, I think there might have been some confusion perhaps with some of the arguments that were being made, um, by, uh, some of, some of the council with the last go-around or maybe it was just a misunderstanding, uh, during the deliberations. But, uh, this section is drafted where, again, it has to be an eight thirty G application, which would create its own regulations if, if somebody wanted to.
Attorney Smith, this might be a technical point, but I think it's important. Would it have to be an eight dash thirty G application? Would it have, have to be an application for a project that met the standards of eight dash thirty G? Is it, isn't there a difference?
No, I think it would have to have the thirty percent affordable component with a deed restriction for forty years, which is the minimum requirement. So, so it would have to comply with that. If it were ten units, they would have to have three, would have to be at the, uh, at the thirty percent with two at sixty and one at, at, at eighty percent median income and you'd have to have that forty-year restriction.
Couldn't an applicant, uh, in another zone apply for a project that happened to have thirty percent affordable housing component, um, and not necessarily be subject to the Affordable Housing Appeal Statute, right?
I don't know why an applicant would want to, um, provide for that affordable component and not have the benefit of section eight dash thirty G. So, I know I've, I've run into this with other, other towns, some towns are, this applies everywhere, and then it's like, you can make it as, we can make it so it just applies to this one property and nothing else, and then I've been told, well, then it's spot zoning, which I don't think exists anymore anyways, but it, no, I think if, if you had it at thirty, it's, it's defined in the statute, it's a hous- it's an affordable housing development, uh, application has to be in affordable housing development, and that has to be either assisted or it has to be, again, a proposal where thirty percent of the, uh, housing stock meets that affordable component provided in the statute, which does include the deed restriction for sixty years, and that's, and I, I do have the statutes, but that's, that's how that's defined, so you would have to, anybody who came in, uh, with the application, with an application under this section, uh, they would have to comply with it. If they wanted to come in with an affordable housing, uh, proposal, uh, pick one of the residential zones, they would probably draft their own, uh, set of regulations to comply with that proposal.
Well, my, my question was, I think, less about the thirty percent, but if we adopt the regulations, even with what the site that you just, you just, uh, uh, said for us, does the standard that the commission has to apply in an appeal, apply to those regulations? Okay, 'cause that's, that's kind of the key point, is if the, an applicant later comes in with these regulations, it's a permitted use, they meet all the objective criteria, we could deny it for aesthetic reasons, architecture, not in harmony, pretty standard one, not one that often passes muster with eight thirty G. But your point is that with this, with that last section that you just read, any applicant under these new regulations would have to come under eight thirty G in its entirety, including our standard, uh, on an appeal to show the bur- have the burden to prove substantial harm to, in, to public safety or interest. That's kind of my point. If we adopt these regulations, are we, do we have, does anybody coming in have, do we have to have that burden that goes with it?
Oh, the burden would go with it under eight thirty G regardless of whether these regulations were there or another set of regulations. If it were an eight thirty G, uh, uh, compliant, uh, proposal.
Okay, 'cause that's my concern is that, and I think raised in our staff comments, is once it's in, once it's a permitted use with all these objective criteria that we have, you're proposing in there, it becomes a permitted use. I'm some, I'm surprised and somewhat, uh, it's unknown, unsure to me that, I mean, you're telling me this and I accept that, that that's your position, I'm unfamiliar with it that once it's in the regulations, that yours, the provision you put at the end, it, it has to be an eight thirty G allows for everything, not just the percentages, but the actual standards that we normally have to grapple with that goes with it.
It, that's the benefit to an applicant, correct. That's standard, obviously, but then the benefit to the, the commission, the protection, is that if anybody comes in under this, it has to be an eight thirty G application, can't be a market rate, can't be somebody, you can't file with twenty percent of the units at eighty percent median income and say, "We can take advantage of this," uh, that, because it's not an eight thirty G compliant. And once it's eight thirty G compliant, it's not, it, it's just, it won't be your standard zoning compliance or special permit review, right? It's a, it shifts the burden to prove. Uh, so the, the point that I, um, is, the point I, I think that I'm just trying to impress upon the commission is, the regulations are here just to govern this community that's proposed, sixty-three unit community, uh, that's part of the zoning compliance application. We'll govern that going forward in time, so there's gonna be set, there's, there's all the requirements that are in there that will govern it, um, and, um, and then if somebody, again, if somebody else wanted to use this section, they could, but in all likelihood, why would they?
Well, I mean, that's almost partly like, almost my point, well, maybe not my point that I've made so far, but a future applicant who's coming under eight thirty G wouldn't have to worry about these regula- proposed regulations anyways. They could add an extra story, they could do something different. So, it, that's why we were coming with this idea that the standards for eight thirty G were not going to be applied to this, because, as you just said, why would it? Because you're coming in with an eight thirty G, whatever our regulations somewhat go out the window anyways.
The burden of proof goes out the window. You would have these regulations here if somebody wanted to abide by it, but if, for example, they, they wanted to change the minimum lot size or the frontage requirement, they would just amend this or come up with their own regs.
And that's, but you said the regulations are here though, that's, if they're not, if it's not an eight thirty G application, oh, let me put it this way, can somebody come in with an eight thirty G application under the, no, sorry, hold on. Can somebody come in, if we adopt these regulations, come in with a, a non-eight thirty G application, but give the eight, the thirty percent and meet all these regu- proposed regulations? It's not an eight thirty G application, it gives the thirty percent affordable housing in accord with the, the eight thirty G application, but it's a non-eight thirty G application in the sense of, if we deny it, we have the burden of proof on appeal.
And assuming it's forty, it's a deed restricted for forty.
All that stuff, yeah. The deed restrictions, uh, the percentages.
Well, so then, then it would be eight thirty G compliant, and then they would, they would have the benefit of the burden of sh- shifting of the burden of proof. If somebody came in and said, "I don't want to do the, I'm gonna waive that with the commission, this'll just be a straight-up zoning compliance application," I guess they could do that, but again, this could only be used for an, an eight thirty G compliant proposal, and that's defined by the statute.
With respect to the affordable units though.
Mm-hmm.
But again, we, somebody can come in with a regular site plan application that has the, the affordable unit components that we need, the thirty percent shifted, all that stuff, but thirty, I'll just say thirty percent, and it can be a regular site plan application where it was as a special permit in this area, would this be a special permit? Or a special?
It would be site plan or zoning compliance, but.
Zoning compliance, okay, but they, we could possibly deny for, um, what, architecture or harmony, harmonizing with the, with the, um, neighborhood, but it would still be a permitted use, and we would not need to necessarily have the burden shifting of eight thirty G.
Again, because it would be, it would have to be an eight thirty G application if somebody wanted to use this going forward for another property, or if my client doesn't build, magically gets an approval, but he doesn't build it in, uh, five years or whatever time period and expires, but then he wanted to come back in again, or he sells the property and somebody else comes back in, and if these regs are in effect, or if not, they, well, let's assume the regs are in effect.
Assume, yeah, we have.
Then they would come in under, they could just refile, but they would have to meet all the eight thirty G requirements, and if they're doing that, then it would shift the burden of proof. This, this would not affect the shifting of the burden of proof. If somebody filed under these regulations, it would have to be eight thirty G compliant. The burden shifts, unless somebody waived it, but.
The burden again being that, that if we deny, the commission has to prove.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Levy, I'm sorry.
Of course, oh.
Yeah, that's what I was, I thought that was where you were going to.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Braun?
Um, I have a question, um, Kathy Braun for the record. So, I don't see something in the text amendment that says specifically it must be an eight dash thirty G application, just that, um, it has, as a, that sentence you read out says, um, "Fully satisfy the intent requirements and purposes of eight dash thirty G," but it doesn't say it has to be an eight dash thirty G application.
Well.
You're sort of implying that the only way you could do this is if it is an eight dash thirty G, but it doesn't really necessarily have to be according to my interpreting of this.
Well, it, I think we, we have the word requirements in there, so it has to meet the requirements of eight thirty.
But it doesn't have to be an eight dash thirty G.
Oh, well, if it ha- if it meets the requirements, it has, then it's.
But the burden shifting only happens with eight dash thirty G. It doesn't happen with not eight dash thirty G.
If it's semantics and you're concerned about it, we can, you can just amend and approve, you can make that clear, but I think it's clear, it says it has to meet the requirements of section eight dash thirty G, so if it meets the requirements of eight dash thirty G, then it's an affordable housing development application and it, and it compli- it complies with eight thirty G.
If you file pursuant to eight dash thirty G, then the burden shifts to the, um, commission to justify any kind of denial or modification, blah, blah, blah. But if it's not filed under eight dash thirty G, the burden doesn't shift to the commission, it remains on the applicant, right?
Correct.
Okay, so to me, that's a distinction that makes a difference, and I have another question about nomenclature. There's, um, different times in this, uh, text amendment where you talk about, where it talks about workforce or mixed income. I did a word search in eight dash thirty G, I didn't see workforce in there anywhere, I'm not sure if mixed income is in there, but I, I think what you mean is affordable housing.
Oh, it's affordable units, if you want to call them that. I don't think affordable units is found in the statute either, it's, it's not, it's not a defined term. I think over time, uh, applicants have utilized and housing advocates have utilized workforce housing, housing opportunity, every town, quite frankly, um, and I know you have a new affordable housing plan, uh, you just adopted, uh, very recently, within the last month, month and a half, and, um, and I don't know how, and I just don't recall how it's referred to there, and, um, but different towns, well, especially with the affordable housing plans being required by statute after the last legislative session, uh, everybody just refers to them differently, so if they're, that, I just, over time, um, twenty-five, thirty years of filing applications occasionally under eight thirty G, I, we've just gone from, we used affordable, uh, different av- housing advocates felt that affordable, you know, with the connotation, let's use workforce, mixed income, uh, I've done talks with some state, state folks and, you know, you just, you know, some of the, with, with fair housing, there's just these concerns and, and semantics, uh, but it's all meant to comply, uh, with, with the statute, so it's just used interchangeably, Commissioner Braun, and there's no rhyme or reason other than just using workforce and mixed income if there were, if the commission felt that there was a particular phraseology that you wanted to use then, or expression, could do that.
I guess, so my thought is, if this is supposed to basically mirror or be identical in effect to the eight dash thirty statute, then we're in, we're importing words that are not in the eight dash thirty statute, which could be subject to other interpretation. Those words are not defined in the eight dash thirty statute, I believe affordable housing might be, but you could probably tell me if you have the statute in front of you. Um, so if we're importing other words, they should be defined, and if they don't exactly match within the statute, then you don't have something that's exactly what the statute is. And I have a sort of follow-up question. If this supposed, if this text amendment is supposed to be exactly identical to the statute in how it works, in terms of shifting the burden of proof to the commission from the applicant, and all the requ- every single requirement in the statute that the applicant has to satisfy to qualify for an eight dash thirty G application, then, I, please explain to me what the purpose is of having, um, the text amendment, because if it doesn't change anything, and if the eight dash thirty G statute gives you the same power, okay, to not follow zoning rules and be able to, you know, put the burden of proof on the commission, what does this accomplish? That's what I don't understand.
Oh, I thought I heard something. Well, one quick point, uh, if, I'm just referring, Commissioner Braun, to, uh, the requirement that it comply with eight thirty G. If you look at, it's at page five, it's at the bottom, it's section twelve, three, twenty-nine, nine, with periods.
What section is that again? I'm sorry.
It's subsec- it's at the bottom of page five, Commissioner Braun.
Which se- subsection of the text amendment?
Oh, it's twelve point three, point two-nine, point nine.
Point nine, okay.
Requirements four. So again, it's, I, in, in this, I didn't modify this for this application, just for the record, uh, 'cause I know there was the confusion with, with that other application, uh, that, that, uh, the chairman was referring to.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you speak up just a little bit?
But again, it does indicate here that any, uh, multifamily dwelling proposal submitted pursuant to the section, which is the permitted use under the section, uh, has to provide for housing with not less than thirty percent, forty percent deed restricted, rented or sold, and preserved dwelling units as housing for individuals or families as provided by section eight dash thirty G as amended, so, um, I just respectfully submit that I think the language makes it clear that it has to be an eight thirty G application. If the commission were to see fit to approve the text amendment and felt that it wasn't clear on that, you could certainly require as a condition of approval that whatever phrase, whatever language you wanted to be added, we would have no objection to it because that's the absolute intent of this text amendment, and the purpose of it, to answer this, your last question, I just wanted to make sure I made reference to that section, Commissioner Braun, is that, uh, a couple of things. One is it provides finality for a lender, so they have a set, they have regulations that govern it, uh, and, um, and the other thing is that it creates some, it creates a use that's permitted under a set of zoning regulations, so it's not out there without any regulations, effectively a non-conforming use with non-conforming structures, and I know in the, um, in the beach decision, uh, from the trial court, uh, Judge Berger did make reference to that, that it, it's, it's one of the benefits of having the text amendment, and very often text amendments, I mean, uh, there's a, a group of us that have been doing this for a long time in the, uh, in the land use practice area, uh, and we've always utilized text amendment. Some of us use zone change, rezone the property pursuant to the text amendment, and then a site plan application, um, but again, it's, um, again, there's, there's some set regs for text to commission that governs this property going forward, and somebody can't go beyond whatever those regulatory requirements are without going and asking for variance or coming back to the commission to amend the text amendment. Otherwise, there's nothing governing those, that use if it were to be approved, whether by the commission or by a court down the road, so the whole purpose is just really to provide, uh, again, a governing set of regulatory provisions that would govern a shopping center or a single-family home or a hotel, whatever, and that, uh, and I just respectfully submit that does, that does provide protection to the commission, because it's, this is what, this is what was approved.
The, the portion about the percent that has to be affordable being thirty percent, I'm trying to find in here if it also splits it out between the sixty percent median income level versus the eighty percent median income level, is that level of detail in the text amendment?
I don't believe it is, but that's why it says it has to be pursuant, as provided by section eight dash thirty G, so, and that may change, and it, I do have as amended, uh, if they, anything, they increase it, they, they increased it from the original draft, and they added the sixty percent component, um, with, with, in response to, um, suburban towns mainly, uh, saying that they wanted that, I'm sorry.
So, 'cause I'm looking here, when it talks about eight dash thirty G, it doesn't say as amended, obviously it could be amended, I mean, not in every instance anyway.
Well, it, it, again, you don't have to, I, it's, it's just a phraseology so that the commission doesn't have to go back and amend the regs. It's the classic, if you incorporate a statute into your regs, very often you might want to put as amended. If you don't, then that, that would work too. The whole, anyways, I'm sorry.
And then the, um, so if you don't specify that split of the sixty percent, it has to be half of the affordable units versus the eighty percent median income, does that, could that be seen as conflicting with the statute? Like if the statute has a different requirement or more specific, because yours, if somebody doesn't want to use fifty-fifty, would that be allowed under your text amendment?
That's a good question. No, if this application, if we submitted this, if these regs were in existence and we came in and submitted an application under it, and had thirty percent at eighty percent median income, we wouldn't comply with the regulations because it's not consistent with, uh, with the requirements of section eight dash thirty G as required in here, which would require a sixty percent component. So we, we couldn't file, uh, at thirty percent with everything eighty.
And then, another question, if eight dash thirty G goes out the window someday, or if, um, Fairfield reaches a moratorium, or reaches the ten percent ratio which exempts it from eight dash thirty G, what happens to the regulation then?
Would have to be eight thirty G compliant, and you're not, if you have a moratorium, uh, you qualify with your points, and, uh, you would not have, the burden would not shift. An application would have to comply with this, but under the moratorium, it wouldn't be filed under, they wouldn't have, an applicant wouldn't have the protection of it, because again, you would have the moratorium in effect.
Except that, again, this text amendment doesn't seem to say it has to be an eight dash thirty G, so in my mind, it doesn't have to be an eight dash thirty G, it could have all the qualifications of an eight dash thirty G, but if we reach our moratorium, it doesn't say that we're out, you know, that it can't be filed.
Well, again, the moratorium would protect you. If this says, this doesn't say anything about a burden, it just says that the application has to be submitted pursuant to section eight dash thirty G. If it is, then it really doesn't matter about the regulations, the state statute, general assembly has said, then the burden shifts, uh, for, for any application.
If it's eight dash thirty G. If it's not eight dash thirty G, then it doesn't shift.
Well, but, well, you can't file it if it's not an eight thirty G.
But it doesn't, I don't think it says that.
If, well, again, I, I respectfully submit that it does, if you don't, then, make it, make that clear, please, because there's, that's the intent, there's, there's nothing, there's no trickery here, there's, you know, it's. There's, there's nothing, there's no trickery here, there's, you know, it's just, that's the intent of this application.
Yeah, I'm just sort of a word myth person, and I don't, you know, I see things that aren't in eight dash thirty G, and it makes me wonder, is this really an eight dash thirty G? Because there are words being incorporated that are not in eight dash thirty G, so, okay, thank you.
I'm just a country land use lawyer, and whatever you think you, if it's something, again, there's nothing meant to, I'm not going to stand and misrepresent anything to this commission or any other commission or judge in the state. That's the intent of, of this, but, and I, I understand your, and all good points, and if it needs to be clarified, please feel free to.
Thank you.
We have no objection to that.
After me, Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner Levy. Can you, if, if you're able to, obviously not now, point to other locality, localities that have this kind of regulation? It, it doesn't have to be now, it could be late, at some point, other, where you've had, I guess success is a good word, implementing these regulations, and maybe even if there is some statu, some appeal afterwards that kind of reinforces that.
So I, I had very, I, I, I can, and there's a number of, we just.
We don't need to go into too much, I just, if you're able to do that, that's fine.
I can, but I have an idea for, to share with the commission.
Okay, go ahead, please.
We came up in Westport after a few, a few applications, and with the, Westport, because of their concern, similar to what I'm hearing here, put a sunset provision on the text amendment. So that way, when they approve the eight thirty G, then it was, they put a sunset provision, so my client had a set of governing regulations for that development going forward, but it was sunsetted out, I don't know, don't hold me to it, whether it was thirty days, we could call Mary Young, I just don't remember what the time period was. And then those regulations basically were, they, they, they weren't in effect at that point, but they did apply to my client's application that was approved, because then there were, again, set of governing regulations, et cetera, everything I said before. But then the commission, regs went out, they were no longer in, in effect, and so nobody could use them after like a two-week time period, whatever it was after the effective date. Because they made the, the regs, they approved it with, with a sunset, and then they approved the site plan with a date, certain effective date, which was within that window before the sunset, and that works too, that would be fine.
Commissioner Gordon? She's remote. I think you're on mute, though.
Yes, okay, I'm off mute. Thank you. I, I actually said I had a question before Commissioner Braun asked all her questions, and I was also wondering about why we need to do this, you know, when we, they already can do what they do, and also the ramifications of if we get a moratorium. And I guess I don't understand why we'd want to change regulations that seem to be upsetting to the whole town or a lot of the town, so that was just, but, you know, I heard the answer, I still am not sure that I'm convinced, but I just, that was my question.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
Just by, by a clarification, I don't see where anybody would actually apply under this text amendment, other than as an eight thirty G. I mean, why would somebody who wants to put in a seventh floor residential building, just simply come in under the regulations, and then we could overrule it based on traffic considerations, which might not be an issue in an eight thirty G? Am I understanding that correctly?
I believe so, yes.
But the converse, of course, is that theoretically, in our downtown business district, every property owner will come in with a six-floor residential building and say, we meet your regulations, and we just want site plan approval, if they have the affordable component.
If it were affordable, right.
Right. So they, so theoretically, it could all be residential, if this.
And again, if somebody came in with an eight thirty G, I mean, there's a few towns, like Newtown, I've, I've done a portal housing applic, they have affordable housing regs, but I, I don't believe it's with a sixty percent component, I'm just trying to remember. But they have affordable, and we, we applied under that, and I think it, it was more like an IH, the incentive housing zone, twenty percent at eighty percent. And I could be wrong, I'll check and confirm it before the next meeting and let your professional staff know, but I, you know, we have come in under that, and then, and then, but if it were an eight thirty G and we didn't comply with it, I wouldn't, I'd tell the client there's no reason to apply under the town's regs when these things get adopted, because it doesn't work for us. We need, we need relief with setbacks or impervious coverage, whatever it is, we would just draft our own, or we would do an amendment to, to this to make it work for us. So, you know, it really, this is where, and I had the same very, just like we're having now, and this is engaging, I enjoy this, and, and I'm just trying to explain it, but I, same thing, in, in Westport in particular, we really went around on this. In other towns, I, they've just approved them. And, but, in, in the short answer and the easy answer, I thought, and I don't think I came up with it, was why don't we just sunset it? And it was like, that, that would work for my client, because then there would be governing regulations for it. Nobody could, could come in under it afterward, and if that was a concern, then that would be a way to potentially address that.
And just one last question, where you had the conflict between the, the zone, the center design business district, which generally provides for commercial on the first floor, and then this text amendment was residential. And we ran into this on Ruane Street, where there was a proposal to have commercial on the first floor, and the question was, is eighty percent, is that still affordable housing? Or, you know, is it a duck or not? You know, what if somebody came in and said, well, I want commercial on the first floor that meets the zone requirements for your center design business district, and then a hundred percent of the rest, the other six floors, are going to be residential? Would that be permitted under this text amendment?
With the thirty percent?
Yeah, with the thirty percent.
As in affordable?
Yeah.
Well, I, the first question would be whether it was affordable with a commercial component.
Right.
But we're not going to go there, and I'm not going to give my professional opinion on that, because it's not here at the, we don't have that component.
The courts have gone both ways.
Yeah, we don't have any definitive ruling, and I usually, I haven't found anybody who really wants to be the test case, and I tell them that, there's no reason to be the test case, otherwise.
Can you speak up a little? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
I apologize. Boy, I wish I, but I suppose it doesn't allow for a commercial, but I suppose somebody could, but I, I don't think, and I just, if you bear with me, just so that I could, I don't want to respond and be incorrect, so the only permitted uses under here would be multifamily residential and related accessory buildings, amenity structures and uses. So unless the commission found that there was, you know, a coffee house or a shop or something on the first floor, or some sort of business was in accessory use, which it probably wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a permitted use under these regs, so it would have to be multifamily.
But it would be a permitted use under the center design business district, in center design.
Right, and if you added the, if you added an eight thirty G component, I don't know why you would, unless you wanted to take advantage of it, then it wouldn't make much, I don't, it wouldn't make a difference. If the commission, you know, the commission could always, if somebody filed under here, ask if, if the commission were to approve it, if there would be, as an option, a commercial component available. And if the applicant agreed to that, then this could be amended accordingly, and we'd go from there, type of thing, if somebody wanted to do that. But I think they would have to amend this, Commissioner Levy.
I have so many questions, but I don't want to interrupt your presentation. I don't know if you're finished or not.
Well, why don't we go through the, you were going to go through the proposed?
I was, let's see, what do I have next here? I do have some slides that I would like to go through. And I, I'm really focused on the text amendment, and once I get through that, I'm just going to give a very, very brief overview, because we did get a letter from your, your housing committee, affordable housing committee. You know, I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through the affordability plan unless there are questions for it. And then I was, very little overview of the proposal, and then turn it over to Jason, so we can get into the site-specific design proposal, components for the commission and for the citizens, so. But I, and I do appreciate you going through the zoning amendment, because I, I just sensed that there was, you know, perhaps some confusion, I wasn't clear enough with one of the, either one of the prior ones that I've had with the commission, and where in both cases, we had text amendments to explain the reason for that. But, but that was one of the things, again, Judge Berger recognized, that this is very often a standard. There have been people that walk in and just drop a set of plans on the table and say, it's eight thirty G, because it has the thirty percent component, and I'll do a deed restriction. And the courts have held, you know, okay, it probably complies with eight thirty G, but there's a section in the statute, in the second Blue Ribbon Commission, we had a, there was a small group of us, three, we talked about the substantial evidence, sufficient evidence standard, and we came up with recommendations for the full commission, and then, you know, then, you know, report to the full general assembly. But I don't know if it went in with that second Blue Ribbon Commission or the first one, but it is, it's very clear, I think it's the second, you know, affordable housing application, this is subsection two, eight-two, means any application made to a commission in connection with an affordable housing development, which is defined with the thirty percent and the eighty percent. And again, I know I got in trouble in responding to Commissioner Levy with one of my, with the Beach one, and it was quoted, and I was like, no, I don't think Commissioner Levy was actually asking me that question, because it was with the understanding, my understanding, that you would prefer and you have approved other eight thirty G applications with just the zoning compliance certificate. And I think I responded, but yes, I understand that's what you do, and if that's what happened, that would probably be okay.
I think I, you needed it.
Right, and I don't want to, I don't want to be, we would like to have it, we have, we feel we have the right, and I, I'd rather not spend too much time, you know, if you denied this and approved some, you know, something else that was acceptable to the client to, to build, and get a certificate and start building, whether that would be acceptable or not. I mean, I guess if, if we heard something along those lines and I could respond, but I don't want to respond in a vacuum, because that'll be taken out of context, and it'll be the applicant's attorney agree that it's not needed. But we feel it's needed, and we have it before you, and I just don't want to get short-changed. I don't think you, it was innocent question, innocent answer, and, but, but again, that's the purpose of it, and, and one of the big things is not having that nonconformity, and, you know, it's, it's just, it's valid, it's governed by some regulations. Even if the regulations are sunsetted out, at least that development that's approved, wherever it is in the state, has some regulations governing it. Anything else? I, I.
Is, are you going through the proposed, or are you moving on?
I, we'll, we'll move on unless anybody has any further questions.
My only question is this, though, because here we have now this, these regulations that are going to be, we'll say, as you said, under eight thirty G application for this entire zone. So our standard is going to be the regular eight thirty G standard, our burden of proof if we deny these regulation amendments to impact health, wealth, and say, all that stuff, safety. But now you're telling me I have future eight thirty G applications where I can do that? So, you know, part of the concern we had was here, you're, we're taking away commercial. I'm going to go off the idea we're taking away commercial. I think you are, because I think we've seen this in the past. I don't, I think my position is I don't think you can have an eight thirty G with a commercial based on the statute, but we don't have to, right now, we have commercial, we're losing commercial.
Don't disagree with that, that's why there's no commercial.
Yeah, there's no commercial in there. So potentially, we, we are kind of zoning out commercial if slowly but surely all the owners decide to go down this route. Now, they'll be going under eight thirty G according to you, assuming no sunset, let's just say we're not. But we are losing potentially commercial in the downtown, so now we don't have a downtown. We have more density, potentially, more impact on the sewers, which we can get to here, which is an issue here, and will likely be an issue elsewhere, if now all of a sudden we have six stories of residential that pop up in ten years for our sewers. Of course, I'm being a little hyperbolic, but not terribly. Same with drainage, septic, not septic, sewer, parking. So with the idea that these regulations are opening the door for those possibilities, but at the same time, having these future applications be eight thirty Gs unto themselves, I would think it's still proper of us to look at the entire zone, the impact of these regulations on the entire zone, if they were adopted, and if they were permitted to be eventually implemented throughout. We lose commercial, sewers, I mean, we're, we're having the issue in this application with sewers, which I think we'll get to, but now we have other buildings. I mean, I think it's appropriate for us to be looking at how these regulations impact our zone as if they just, you know, happen in the next five, ten years, regardless of the fact that the future application would have to be under eight thirty G anyways. Am I wrong in thinking that, or how should I be applying the standard when you're telling me that really the future applications are going to have that opportunity to apply the eight thirty G standard anyways? Are you telling me to kick the can down the road, or can I look at these, the effects now?
I'm not saying, as, as to this particular application and the eight thirty G standard, the commission can certainly look at anything that the commission wants to, and I'm not being sarcastic, including what you're saying, Mr. Chairman. And my response to that, as I have to other towns and commissions, when it does come up, and it does come up all the time, is that it doesn't really matter. This isn't, it, it may apply to any of the center design business zone district, any property in there. But again, if anybody came in with an application and they wanted to make it an eight thirty G, unfortunately, probably, well, because of the way the statute is worded, and we have one or two cases, not exactly clear cut as to whether you can have a commercial component and say it's an eight thirty G. We could have had a commercial component on the first floor and, and had everything else comply with eight thirty G, thirty percent deed restricted for forty, and if we had been denied and went to court, there would be an argument made, I'm presuming, by your counsel, saying this isn't an eight thirty G, because it's commercial. And I won't, there's one case, car dealership, a couple of units above, and they said, okay, we have three units, we're going to make them affordable, one of them, and that shifts the burden, so we can get the car dealership. And the court said, no, that's not, that's an abuse of eight thirty G, because you have that, you know, so here, it was considered, and it was my feeling, as I agree with the chair on it, that, you know, probably don't want to be the test case and include it. And if the commission wants something and they want to approve it, then we can talk about it with the commission, but if we, we don't have the benefit of the eight thirty G if we have the commercial component. So again, anybody wanting to use this in any other property in your design, center design business district, would have to have an eight thirty G application, I think almost under the terms and the case law, they couldn't, could not have a commercial, unless you wanted to approve it with the commercial, and if the applicant was happy with that, that would be fine. If they got an approval, they're not going to appeal it, there's no burden of proof that shifts, there's no need for it. But again, I think anybody who wanted to, and that's the intent of this regulation, anybody who wants to file an application under these provisions, it has to be an eight thirty G. Some people would say, okay, if that's the case, so what? I mean, the regulations aren't really going to do anything, it's an eight thirty G, it's a burden of proof issue. So it's really, again, it's, it's just having, it, it's, it's going to provide governance for this residential community if it were to be approved in whatever venue or whatever going forward, so it's not a nonconformity, it's not a nonconformity use, because otherwise...
No, I get it, but your position, though, is not that I need to apply the eight thirty G standards for appeals to the regulations and how they would affect the regula, how they would affect the zone now. Your point is, you don't have to get there, because any future application is going to be an eight thirty G, so whatever standard you have to apply, so if there is a parking issue or sewer issue, you know, maybe not the second or the third application, but by the fourth and the fifth, it'll show up and you can stop it then.
At some point, the, the, right, it's the, the tipping point occurs, whatever the, whatever phraseology.
Okay, because I just...
Certainly, that, that could happen.
It strikes me as odd, because here we have a zone amendment, zone regu, regulation zone amendment now, and I would have thought that we should be applying the burdens, the regular burdens that we're used to for site plans, but your point is, no, we don't need to do that, because you'll do that later for other ones down the road.
I just want to make sure I answered that.
No, that's fine.
Justice Peter once asked me something, it was like five parts, and I was like, wasn't quite sure where it was.
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I apologize, I just got...
Because I just don't know what standard I should be applying now, because, you know, according to...
Eight thirty G.
Eight thirty G. But what you're telling me, though, is with the zone regulations, I apply it later, not now.
Well, you would be applying it now, the eight thirty G, because it's an eight thirty G application. But let's say this was approved, and, and just magically, there's, there's another property right next door that meets all these requirements, and, and somebody calls me and says, I'd like to do an eight thirty G application, have it compliant, and I meet, I looked at this, and I meet all these requirements, and I say, well, actually, it's an eight thirty G, you don't even have... all these requirements, and I say, well, actually, it's an 830G, you don't even have to meet all these requirements. If you need any relief from these requirements, we can just do our own text amendments.
Well, that's, I mean, that's been partly our point as well, is why are you doing the text amendments when future applications are gonna change them anyway? I understand your point about the financing, I do get that, I understand it's real, but it just seems odd to me that, for example, the obvious one is the, potentially losing commercial in downtown. I can't, what you're saying, your position is, though, I can't look at how these regulation amendments are going to affect the entirety of the zone now, if implemented, opening, paving the door open for other applications to come forward, which may or may not even con, uh, comply with these, because they're gonna be 830Gs anyways, but, 'cause you would think losing commercial, all the effects on sewer and drainage would potentially, in very persuasively possibly, harm of public interest that we would should be considering. And I just want to make sure you, that's where I would have thought I would have to apply the reg, the standard now. You're telling me, no, it's later when the second or the third or the fourth come down the pike, where parking is too fu, too much, sewer is overstressed, commercial, we've lost, I don't know how much, but whatever. It's at that point that I can stop those particular applications, but not this current zone change.
I would, I would respectfully submit, not this one, correct, but in the future, right, there could be a tipping point with, with a substantial public interest, whatever it may be, that would justify the commission saying, you know, no mas, we understand it's an 830G, so we're gonna deny it for that, whatever that reason is.
And I, the last, I mean, 'cause the point to me is just like, well, then, anything, any zone amendment under 830G should just be, I don't want to use a hyperbolic and say rubber stamped, but pretty close to it, because you got future applications coming down that you can stop, site-specific, so...
And again, it would be really site-specific, any application, just like if it were a special perimeter site plan, right, because you're looking at that site specific, and it's like, does this proposal have an adverse impact on a substantial public interest that outweighs the need for affordable hous, that would, you're right, but that's how you would govern it, Mr. Chairman, right?
Thank you, and I'm sorry to take up the time, but I just felt that was necessary. So, yeah, you'll, I assume we probably covered this in your presentation, but the, um, the neighborhood that this includes, it's not the whole center business district, but it's a four, 400 or 500-foot radius around each transit station, that would be the train station, and any greater Bridgeport Transit bus station, any other stations involved?
Well, I think it's within 400, I just...
It was five...
You're with me, right, Commissioner?
Something was 400 or something, I think four, 500 was, um...
Well, it's, it's right in subsection A of 329-1, 12.3, .29.1, you're right, and the real property has to be located within 400 feet of a train station, that's a minimum requirement.
400 feet or 500 feet?
Four.
Okay. And what was, something else was 500 feet, um, maybe that was the parking overflow?
Oh, that was for the offsite parking within 500 feet, right, yes.
Well, that's, I thought it was the opposite, because, so that's a question also, that, well, that's site, that's project-specific about the overflow, that's not in the text amendment, right?
Well, the text amendment says one parking space per unit, except you can provide up to 10% offsite if you, within 500 feet.
Oh, okay.
You're right.
So base, so that, I had it in my mind reversed, but, so I have a couple questions. Do you have a schematic showing what areas in the center business, just that 400-foot radius extends to around each bus station or transit? Is it on the outside perimeter of the train station, or just the train station, like, is it 500 feet from the whole property, including the parking lot, or where, where does that extend?
That's directly...
No, no, go ahead, yeah.
I believe your professional...
If you're gonna show that, I won't interrupt, you know?
I'm sorry?
If you're gonna show it anyway in your presentation, I don't want...
No, I just, I know that everybody with the sun over here, just trying to get around...
I just, I can't see you turn it, but I'm blinding for the blind in life.
I think, didn't, we provided that in staff, didn't we?
I think your professional staff did, did a, did an exhibit with that.
Is that, would you agree it is the outline of what it would be?
I, I didn't do a, a specific review of that, I, I assume that your town planner and assistant planner would, would go through that with you, but I, I saw it, and it looks, I'm sure it's accurate, I have utmost respect for the two people you have in the planning office, so...
Well, I, yeah, I would, just because it's, it's your application, I would like to know from you that that is correct, because that's a pretty big swath of downtown that now would be subject to purely residential, multifamily construction, up to seven stories tall, 70 feet tall, right?
If it were...
All residential.
If it were an 830G, yes, but we'll look at that and...
If it satisfies 830G requirements.
I'm sorry?
If it satisfies 830G requirements. And then, um, as far as the parking overflow, part of the reg in this project is 10% of the parking that, explain what that, 10% of the parking you provide can be not onsite, it could be somewhere else within 500 feet.
If it's within 500 feet.
And is that 500 feet of the property boundary, or the building? I know in this case, the building is pretty, almost the property boundary.
Right, it's like, and it's, it's a downtown area, it's like Audubon Street and Haven, as opposed to a city, but that's like a neighborhood, kind of like this is, a downtown...
You draw 500 feet on the outside of the property boundary.
If, if you needed to, if you wanted, I would, I would interpret most, most towns and commissions, right, do, I mean, if it's a liquor thing, sometimes it's doorway to doorway, but if it's otherwise, it's just would be the boundary of the property, and I'm not sure, with the 400-foot, for example, how your professional staff did it, but I would assume, I'd not assume, but I, I would think you would go from the perimeter of the, of the property, and this is a fairly small property, as we know.
So that's, but that extends the parking sort of overflow beyond the area that's in the regulate, what the regulation covers, which is 400 feet.
No, the parking would be 500 feet.
Right.
And I, we do have, Dave Sullivan will be touching upon that...
Okay, I'll, I'll...
In his presentation, and he actually has a graphic showing the, I believe, 500 feet.
All right, I'll hold off on that, thanks.
But, but our traffic engineer will address that for you.
Commissioner Levy.
Hopefully, the last question on it, um, 'cause I understand that whether it's a text amendment or the site plan, we're subject to the standard of 830G in terms of the burden and rebuttal, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
So hypothetically, could we say that the text amendment, which could substantially impact whether or not we have a downtown commercial area, that that might be a substantial interest, or public interest, that the text amendment imperils, uh, and deny it on that basis, while saying that the site plan, which is de minimis in comparison to the entire, does not impact that substantial public interest?
I suppose if the record were to substantiate that, and that, that, that would be an option for the commission, to do that if the commission chose to do that.
Okay, I got it.
I think that's what got me in trouble the last time.
Well, I'm just trying to make it clear.
No, and I, and I'm trying to be responsive.
Okay, I think...
Oh, Commissioner Francis.
While we're talking about commercial, there, I can count six businesses, the water upstairs, but I don't know, how many businesses are being displaced by this?
I, I will defer to, Jason may know that, or my client, but I know that there's four buildings with commercial in there, I don't know if they're single-tenant buildings.
I don't know what we have about...
For the record, Dr. Lee Forrest, who was here this evening.
Can you speak up, we, I, outside the area?
On 111 Road, we have about five tenants, and on Camper Street, we have another two tenants.
There's nothing upstairs?
On the site.
So seven tenants total.
There's nothing upstairs?
There was a yoga studio that got displaced after, fully.
Right, oh, nothing else, okay.
Did you get that?
That's on site, not that whole district, okay.
That's on site, right, on the subject property.
Okay.
Yeah, I was asking what would be displaced, how many businesses?
No, got it, thank you.
Follow up on that?
Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, thank you, um, what, what is the plan for these businesses, are they just, do they just, you know, throw up their hands and have to tack up, or what, what's going on there? I mean...
I'll have to assume so, who can't provide for...
Oh.
Who can't provide for, for a commercial space for them, then that'll, uh, be the case.
Yeah, some of the stores have been there for years and are really, you know, the foundation, you know, in our town, so, but very disappointing to hear, thank you.
Would that move away from the regulation amendments, unless you have anything else, or...
Just, I'll, if I...
No, if you have something to...
If I can, but...
No, no, please.
No, it's, it's just that what I would like to do relative, even though it's not required for the text amendment, but it, I would just like to go through, because it does relate to, uh, the, um, the zoning compliance, I just have some references to your new affordability plan, they're on slides, I'll go through them...
No, this, this is your presentation, so go ahead.
Okay, and then reference or two to your P O C D, and then finally to your T O D study, um, I believe it was 18, right, 2018, 2019, but, uh, so the first slide, we can, I think it's, and, and this is, I know we have people watching, I presume, so this is right out of your affordability housing plan, that the town housing committee, I believe, and I, and I saw the special acknowledgements to this commission, which is kind of how it works, and I think Planometrics worked on, on this one with you, uh, Glenn Chalder. Uh, and just a, a couple of quick findings, just to, for the record, this is at page three, quote, and I think I got the quotes correct, that unaffordability of housing for people and families of modest income has continued to grow here in Fairfield. I've seen this in other towns, I read this almost identical statement a couple of weeks ago in another town, um, not involving an 830G. Almost one-third of all households in Fairfield are cost burden, meaning that they're spending more than 30% of their, their income on housing. Uh, next bullet, more than, that's at page seven, next bullet, more than one-fourth of all households in Fairfield are, are quote, are likely struggling with the overall cost of living. These are people and families who already live here, so not unusual, this is where we, we find this throughout the entire state, but this is your Affordable Housing Committee, and now your plan is adopted for the town making this finding. Next one, very little housing in Fairfield, renting or selling at prices considered affordable to people earning typical wages, typical wages, this is, again, out of your plan, out of the town's plan, and then finally, there's, there was a finding that there's more housing options necessary for, not necessarily affordable, folks in the affordable component, but older population, younger residents and families seeking to downsize. And with the next slide, I'll say it again, this is addressing the, what, what, what benefits of having a, what was, is referred to as a, quote, diverse portfolio, end of quote, and, and the, um, the committee and the plan finds that this enhances diversity, it provides housing for essential employees such as education, government, healthcare, I'll come back to, have a slide, quick slide on that in a moment. This is important, because I, I know it's going in a down, this is proposed in a downtown area, and very often, when I'm, if it's not an 830G necessarily, you might have a planning component or an economic impact analysis where the benefits are discussed in promoting boots on the ground, so to speak, and having residential near the commercial, and this is right out of the plan. Next bullet, helps to retain existing businesses and attract new businesses, this is off of page three, and then finally, it increases consumer spending and surrounding economy. You know, it's just like if it's, you know, you're in the West Side, the Village, or wherever in the city, any, I'm just picking New York for a neighborhood, or you can go to Audubon, I don't want to be saying it's an urban center, because I know Fairfield's not any of these cities, but we're talking about neighborhoods, and your downtown is, is, is a nice neighborhood, it's a nice downtown. So those are benefits of having a diverse portfolio and having residential within close proximity or, or within your, your commercial uses. Next, you talk about location guidelines and promoting housing types, and you talk about nodes, and to promote residential where you have nodes, if your TODs reflects you have a train station, you have public transportation in the area, you have arterial roads, you have walkability, people will walk out of here and out of the, out of the building and be able to go and shop, go to theater, get a drink, go to a restaurant, whatever, it's right there. Promotes, promote, one of the goals is promoting mobility and accessibility near train stations and along arterial collector roads, promoting what's, what it says has been referred to in the state statute, it's on that Blue Ribbon Commission and chaired the Smart Growth Committee, and we talked about responsible growth, smart growth patterns and tools, and this is multifamily and commercial, which is like basic 101, uh, responsible growth and promoting smart growth in our towns here throughout the state and with this proposal. And again, the last bullet, facilitate by removing, this, these are recommendations from the plan, facilitate removing percentage limitation on residential floor areas, the building floor areas, and mixed-use development, so if you have a proposal reducing the residential component, here we don't have one, I understand, but this is, I'm just saying, is one of the recommendations to the commission, it should be done through zoning regulations, and remove the limitation on the number of stories devoted to residential use and mixed-use developments. Next slide, please. So your, your house, your affordable housing plan does make reference to your P O C D, which is, you know, was adopted, and this is your, your document, back in November 2016, two of the bullets there, first one, quote, housing opportunities to people of all ages, creed, races, incomes, and physical disabilities, that's at page 63, and then you specifically find in that plan, and I'm sure we all agree, in the affordability plan, the town recognizes the obligation to provide affordable housing, and should continue to pursue appropriate options to supply affordable housing in all areas of town. And then if we can go to the next slide, I have some excerpts from your T O D study from October 2019, and there's discussion in there about the relative scarcity, quote, relative scarcity and high current occupancy of existing multifamily housing in Fairfield means that development in the station areas may be able to capture a relatively high share of the overall market seeking T O D housing, multifamily. Next bullet, from page seven, quote, households seek a variety, a wide variety of multifamily housing option, units, including apartments, and then this, uh, finding or recommendation, I think it is at page seven, of estimating 68.2% multifamily rental and lofts apartment buildings in these T O D areas. The last component here, I did, let me just make sure I'm not missing anything. So I just, I, I know we covered the text amendment before, we'll go to that slide next, this to just my little intro into the site development proposal, but I would respectfully submit to the commission that the zone text amendment is not going to result in an adverse impact to a substantial public interest that outweighs the need for affordable housing, and, and again, we would have no objection if the commission were to see fit to approve the text amendment to include a sunset provision, if, if, if that made the commission more comfortable in, in the long run relative to that. Going to the zoning compliance, just, I have a couple of initial comments, and then I'll turn it over to Jason Edwards, and we can get into the site-specific proposal. I did take out of the affordability housing plan, and this was at page two, there's a breakdown of what affordable means in the plan, and they talk about it, and they do have a, um, an income threshold for the 80% median income level for household size of three, so I would, I equate that to two bedrooms, so two would be in one bedroom, and if you had a child, they would be in the, or somebody else would be in the, would be in the second bedroom, so, and, and this is right out of the report, the, their numbers in the plan are actually, the rents are a little higher than, than what I have in my affordability plan, which is fine, but, uh, I just wanted to note that many of the rents that are in the affordability, uh, plan are higher, so if you take that minimum threshold of $74,008, let's just, I'll just call it $74,000, and I think these, these are all still in effect, and I know I've showed these to you before, in another matter, but if you look at the contract, the existing contract through the end of this month with the town of Fairfield and the police union, someone at the, someone qualifying for the 80% median apartment in this proposal would also qualify in the police officer salary range for, and for any officer in step one to step four, and, and again, the purpose of this is, is not so much for the commission, but just to educate individuals watching this, that this is the type of housing that this is, the affordable component would apply to with this application. Again, if we look at the Board of Ed, uh, contract, this is a little outdated by a year, but essentially, it's, just going back a year ago to the, that contract, the salary range would be steps one through step 13, depending upon the various levels of higher education, so teachers in this range would qualify, and then finally, your, your firefighters, same thing, going back to the contract in 2021, salary step range of steps three to four, those individuals would qualify as well. would qualify, uh, as well. And, uh, relative to the, so for the affordability plan, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time unless you want me to, to go through the affordability plan. I know that you did, I, I received it today, I didn't have a chance to go through it from the Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, they had comments, nothing that we can't include or, or modify, uh, but we do have an affordability plan that is required and would govern, uh, this community going forward. Uh, there's, uh, sample calculations in there, there's a sample deed exhibit, uh, exhibit D, exhibit E is a sample deed restriction that I provided to you. Uh, but if you have any questions, we can, we can probably address that at a, a future meeting and I will take the time between now and, and the next meeting to, uh, look through, uh, the comments from your Affordable Housing Committee.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, is if you can go through it, um, if there's things you can adopt or if there's what, conditions of approval that we can be made based on that or just to respond to it next time?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Chairman. And then again, going to, uh, just my, the summary letter that was submitted with the application, and this, these are will be my, um, my last comments and then I'll turn, turn the presentation, we'll go to the site specific proposal, uh, for the commission and, uh, the citizens. I, I did provide you with an overview, I've covered much of what's in there, is in here. If you have any questions as we proceed, I'm more than happy, uh, more than, uh, willing to, uh, to respond to them. Uh, again, in this, the Schedule A in the affordability plan, and I covered this, uh, unit breakdown at page two in the summary letter. Again, there's sixty-three, uh, units that are being proposed. Uh, one-third of those are nineteen are going to be mixed income or affordable units, uh, subject to the restrictions in eight thirty G. Uh, and then the market rate would be forty-four. We do have a breakdown in the bedroom mix and a, usually you, uh, count efficiencies as one bedroom, uh, for calculating the affordable rents. So with one bedrooms and the efficiencies, we have a total of twenty units. Doing the pro-rata breakdown of percentages, fourteen of those units will be market rate and six are going to be, uh, mixed income units or affordable units. And then the two bedrooms, total of forty-three, thirty market rate and then thirteen mixed income or affordable units. And again, that's in the Schedule A and it's covered in the, um, in my summary letter. I did see a re, uh, one of the comments, and I just very cursory read through the affordable, um, Affordable Housing Committee, uh, comments, they made reference to, uh, possibly, and we just have to look into this and we'll certainly modify, uh, if it is the case, uh, that we, um, we had, the, the floor plans may show, and we'll double check this, uh, ten units at eighty percent and nine at sixty, where we'll reverse it where it's nine at eighty and, and ten at sixty. So that would be consistent with, I think, eight thirty G, that's the fair way of reading the statute. So that's covered at pages two and three. Uh, and I would just respectfully, uh, refer the, uh, commission. As, as you know, you don't, um, Fairfield does not meet the ten percent requirement. I know we're, you're working on, on, uh, qualifying with the equivalent points, uh, to apply for a moratorium. And I think, at this point, we don't have wetlands, we have sewer, and I would just like to, uh, just very briefly, Larry Edwards is going to be addressing the sewer in his presentation. Uh, but again, there are no wetlands and I would just like to state in the record that my client did a W P C A approval in twenty twenty with the condition to make improvements that will provide a substantial amount of capacity to accommodate the proposal. Uh, recently, we reapplied seeking confirmation for the proposed sixty-three units without the improvements that were the condition of the twenty twenty approval in December of twenty twenty. And we were denied without prejudice, we took an appeal. Uh, however, uh, we feel that with the twenty twenty approval, uh, that we have the capacity, more than enough capacity, you'll hear this from Mr. Larry Edwards in a moment, uh, for the sixty-three units, uh, regardless of the fact that we have a pending appeal. I know that, uh, Mr. Went and your, and Ms. Harrigan, in their comments, in their report, I do make reference to, uh, the Riverbend case, I'm very familiar with that. Uh, but again, I would respectfully submit that what has been approved by your W P C A, uh, with my client making those improvements, that are the condition, uh, of approval, that, um, there's lots of capacity. Again, Mr. Edwards will walk you through that.
But it's, I mean, you're not approved, you have conditional approval.
Well, it's approved with the condition that the improvements be made.
I thought it was, hold on, I thought it was a conditional approval so long as you needed to prove that the concept was feasible. The concept of your, uh, what, increasing from eight inches to ten inches.
Yeah. I think, I think my client was told, I wasn't representing my client at that time. We, we can come back and revisit that if, Mr., perhaps if, uh, I might be jumping the gun, I just wanted to set that.
No, that's fine, and if that's something we want to talk with the other, that's fine, I don't mind doing that, but I.
That would be.
Said approved and I was like, you know, that's not my understanding of it, so, uh, we can move on.
Okay. I, 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 I think we'll be spending time on that.
Yes.
To go forward. So with that, unless you have any further questions for me, I'll turn the presentation.
Oh, Commissioner Braun.
I have a quick question on the Affordable Housing Committee. So they have ten questions, are those questions you're gonna answer at a later hearing or are those, is this memo is just dated as the thirteenth? Are they addressed somewhere in the?
Right. We received it today, I know.
Okay.
I know your, your professional staff was trying to get up to speed with everything coming in and get things posted, but I, I looked at it for the first time this afternoon and maybe two, and I just didn't have, I glanced through it quickly, didn't look like there was anything in there that was problematic. From our standpoint, in the sense of saying, no problem, we can do that.
So we could expect, um.
What?
All those ten points to be addressed at a later, at a later hearing? Okay.
Not gonna ignore you or we're not gonna ignore the comments from there?
Okay, thank you.
And I will certainly be responsive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good question. Clarify that. You all set? Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening, uh, for the record, uh, Jason Edwards, J Edwards Associates LLC, engineers and surveyors located at two twenty-seven Stephanie Road, Easton, Connecticut. Uh, we've, uh, prepared the, the site development plans for this project, I'm just gonna give a quick run-through. Um, Chris kind of addressed some of these first points, but I'll, I'll review them anyway. Uh, this is the, the satellite view of, uh, the site in downtown Fairfield. Uh, you've got Uncle Row Road on the east side, um, Sanford Street on the west side, Post Road to the south and the train station to the north. If I can use this. Yeah. This is the parcel directly next door to the, uh, Community Theater, the property next door to the Community Theater. Uh, it's about, uh, four hundred feet from the train station. The, uh, size of the parcel is roughly twenty-one thousand square feet. There's, I believe, five existing structures on the, on the property and, uh, parking lots that support them. Mixture of uses, office, residential, retail, I believe there may be a, a restaurant of some sort in there, coffee house. Uh, the property is served by existing, uh, Town of Fairfield Sewers and Water Services, um, in the street, um, I believe they both come in off of Sanford. The next one. Uh, this proposal, uh, will, we will remove all the existing improvements from the site, that's what we're proposing to do. Uh, the new, new building footprint is approximately eight thousand, eighteen thousand five hundred square feet. The new building will also connect to the sewer main in, uh, Stamford Street and the water service. Uh, the, the structure includes, uh, two-level parking garage, uh, one level being at the first floor where you drive in and the second level going down into the basement level. So there's a ramp that comes down here and this would be subgrade. Uh, there, there's a total of, I believe, sixty parking spaces. If you can go back one, go back one. Yep, so, uh, we've designed a stormwater retention system or detention system, uh, that will collect all runoff from the, the roof and any new paved areas will be diverted into, uh, catch basins here and here that go into an underground chamber here, and then there's also, uh, catch basin here that feeds this chamber. Those two chambers both have high-level overflows which discharge into hydrodynamic separators, one here and one here. Uh, on the south side, we've also incorporated a, a surface-level rain garden, uh, at the request of, uh, engineering staff. Uh, that will provide additional retention and then still feed through the, um, the, the eventual high-level overflow outlets that go into the town storm drainage. Um, the, the drainage analysis that was conducted on the site, uh, we did provide a report that was prepared by a professional engineer. Uh, the town reviewed that report and this design and found them to be satisfactory. Uh, they met the town requirements. Uh, the peak flow from the site during a one-hundred-year storm during the existing conditions now, we calculated three-point-eight-two cubic feet per second of runoff. Uh, the proposed design generates two-point-three-six cubic feet per second, so that has a reduction of roughly thirty-eight percent, uh, with the proposed versus new, or proposed versus the existing, I'm sorry. Uh, there is a series of internal floor drains in the parking garage on both levels. Now, those are all essentially within the building, so they would not be picking up, uh, they're not intended to pick up rain runoff, they would be runoff from cars, snowmelt, a relatively small amount of water would be going to those. Uh, but those would drain, if you can go one slide forward, please. Uh, those would drain into a tank in the basement. Uh, that tank would have, uh, some sort of a alarm on it that would notify when almost full, a truck would come in and pump it out and truck it off-site. We don't expect that to happen very frequently. There is no, uh, no footing drain or foundation drain proposed, uh, for this structure, it's been designed watertight, so the, uh, the only groundwater we would encounter is during construction and, uh, I believe the architect has a plan to, uh, demonstrate what we're gonna do with the water at that point, but once constructed, there would be no outlet, uh, to the storm drainage system for groundwater. Uh, that would all be kept underground. Next. This is our erosion control plan, um, standard erosion control plan, we show silt fences along the boundaries. Uh, we also show, uh, some temporary diversion swales to make sure that we contain any surface runoff and sediment. Uh, we do show a temporary, uh, sediment trap here, anti-tracking apron here, uh, silt fences surrounding any of the existing street drainage to make sure that that does not get impacted by the, uh, uh, construction. Uh, next one, please. At the request or as a, I believe it's actually a, a requirement, uh, we, we provided a landscape plan. Uh, there's not a lot to landscape on this site, but we do provide a series of plantings for the, um, for the rain garden as well as, uh, a series of plantings in the front and where we can fit them along this side. Um, there's also, one of the concerns, I believe of the, the town engineer or the engineering department was the, uh, the maintenance and installation of that rain garden after construction when, um, you know, we, we proposed a temporary sediment trap in that area. So there's a series of notes here that were provided by the landscape designer, uh, landscape architect that address how that will, uh, be installed and maintained, um, through, excuse me, through construction as well as, uh, post-construction. Uh, one more, please. And then we also provided a lighting plan, uh, and photometric plan, which, uh, is a requirement of the, uh, zoning regulations and this does meet, the lighting plan does meet the, uh, the, the town zoning regulations. I believe that is all that I have, if I could turn it over to, uh, Larry Edwards is remote and he's going to speak on the sewer.
Uh, hold on one second, uh, any questions?
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Francis. And then Commissioner Braun.
You, um, expect no water table seeping into this?
Uh, we, we did test pits out there, uh, I think the water table was about, I don't want to quote this, I think it was roughly ten feet down, um, that we encountered when we did our test pits. Uh, the water, the, the building for the architect has been designed to be watertight, so the water will not get into the building.
Because the Community Theater and the old post restaurant have water in basement and down the street at twelve eighty.
I can't hear.
You speak up a little bit, Nick.
And twelve eighty post road has water sometimes.
That's, the, the design of the building is to be watertight.
And, um, I've seen in my research an old map of Fairfield that shows a, a literal pond under the Community Theater today. So I'll, I'll give that to have the line to show you next time.
Yeah, appreciate it.
There's a lot of water in this area and a lot of, after rain starts, a lot of cooling and flooding. But I'm, I'm very surprised you can go underground.
Like I said, there are test pits and we can supply that, I believe it's also, that data's in the engineering report. And if it's not, then we'll make sure we provide it to you, but we did do test pits there and we did not encounter a high-water table here.
Commissioner Braun.
What, what are the dimensions of the, of the rain garden? And there's one on each side?
No, there's only one rain garden.
Oh.
That's probably, yeah, the southwest corner, it's, um.
The two triangles on the bottom and on the top, what are those, is that landscaping?
This is, this is a, uh, rain garden here, this is landscaping here.
And what's in the rest of that large triangle?
In here? This is gonna be a parking area here, the parking extends.
Oh, you have outside parking also, I thought it was all under the building.
No, there's, there's a, a first-level parking that is under the building and then, this is ground level, I should say, and that extends, this is the basement parking. So then there's also above that, there's this first level and that has kind of wings that come out the side of each building, uh, each side of the building, and there's a couple parking spaces on either side there.
And as far as landscaping in front of the building, there's a couple of fairly mature-looking trees in front of the current buildings there. Are those going to be removed during the construction process?
Uh, I, I, as far as we're showing them, we intend for them to remain. Um, if the, uh, builder has other ideas, I think.
Just want to just show them, to the east side there?
Talking about the east side on, on Uncle War Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we are showing those to remain. Um, now, if they become a, a issue with, um, Mr. Getz Building Design, he can speak to that, but I, I believe that they can remain.
And I'm, I'm looking at the comments from the engineer, was, was there a code review done in this project? You know, I don't know if you know what a code review, it's an informal.
It was done, uh, there was code review was done.
Oh.
This was submitted previously, correct?
When it was a course or?
Right. It was a different, uh, same footprint of the building, it just went up. Uh, so, uh, the code review was done at that point and it was not done again.
Could, could someone get us a copy of the code review, 'cause I couldn't find it on the website or in my own download from last year, for, I just couldn't find it.
I, I haven't.
'Cause I guess my question is, were the, we, that thing was withdrawn, uh, the prior application, I don't think it even went to a decision-making on either the text amendment or the, uh, application.
I was not in the loop on that.
I'm just curious with the code review because different town departments would have weighed in with potential questions, which I'm sure you've addressed, and also in this new memo by engineering, they have a number of questions. Um, this is from April of twenty twenty-two, so are all of those questions addressed in the application material?
Uh, I believe we've, we've attempted to address them all in the application or we are gonna address them here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, um, do you know, um, the twelve eighty post road that was used as an example of water getting in and constant sub-pump use, do you know if they're, what their design was, if it was watertight?
I do not.
And, and I know John Getz, for the record, Chris Smith, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Getz will be walking, addressing this issue with the, uh, with the commission, with his building design.
Okay, and, um, I, I think I was, ran out to the restroom, excuse me, but what was the, the, the tanks that were gonna take water out from the trucks, what was that for?
That, if you can go back a couple of slides, please. Um, one more. One more, sorry.
One more, there it is.
Yeah, this one. Uh, there's floor drains in the basement, uh, that they chart, they discharge into a tank, uh, because the, the city doesn't want us to discharge to the storm drainage, so they're going to a tank. There's no rainfall that goes in there, it's just whatever comes off of vehicle.
So if hypothetically, something happened and water was getting into the basement, the, uh, the garage basement, it would go into these tanks, you would pump it out and you would transport it, I suspect off-site because.
Yeah.
What we have, at least what we have been told is our drainage cannot accommodate constant sub-pump use. So even if your foundation failed and it wa, water was getting in routinely, as, as potentially routinely as twelve eighty post road, it would get, go into these tanks and you'd be just having a truck come every day or every other day, or whatever the case may be, and pumping it and taking it off-site.
That's if, if the building design failed and Mr. Getz can address that.
Okay.
That, that may be how it works, but, um.
No, but, but that's what would happen, I guess, because water gets into the, well, I mean, I'll, I'll let him explain it then, okay. Um, hold on one second. We're not ex, uh, if this is for somebody else, are you expecting additional runoff from the site, uh, based on the new site, this new application, that would increase our, the, uh, the stress on drainage?
No, uh, we, uh, I, I think I mentioned, we provide. No, uh, we, uh, I, I think I mentioned, we provided a reduction here. Uh, and your peak runoff is actually, it was, now is 3.82 cubic feet per second. We've reduced it to 2.36, so that's about a 38% reduction. So we're reducing the, the runoff from the site.
And you said one of your colleagues will be dealing with um, uh, during construction, how water will be dressed? And I suspect maybe also how um sidewalk will be, uh, public accommodations will be accommodated.
Mr. Getz is gonna address those.
Okay.
How does that happen, that reduction, when so much of the site is open and sandy now?
Uh, well, there's a, a drainage calculations that are done, that you base, that, that compute the, the runoff based on the existing impervious area. We then do our own new computations based on the new impervious area. And then we create, if you can go back one slide, we create stormwater storage, uh, which doesn't exist now um in these chambers. So the water goes into the chambers and it's held here uh before leaving the site.
But doesn't it rather defy common sense that you put up a building that's impervious, where the site is half pervious now? And it becomes better?
Uh, you, I understand what you're saying, but the calculations will, will prove that that's, you know, what the intent of these chambers are is to withhold, hold back the runoff so that it doesn't leave the site any faster than it does now.
Is, is there a change in impervious surface from before until now? Before being there's five or six or seven smaller buildings with alleys and stuff?
There is a.
One big monolith, right? There's nothing, there's no empty space other than on the outside.
You've got the little corners there, yeah. Now, there is an increase, uh, I believe, I don't wanna state the number. I don't know exactly what the number is, but there is an increase. It's in the drainage report.
We can get that.
We can get that for you, sure.
Okay, thank you.
But uh, for the record, uh, Chris Smith, uh, Mr. Edwards, there's no net increase in peak flow or net increase in.
Can you speak up a little? I'm sorry, it's just hard to hear.
I, uh, so there's no net increase in peak or net flow associated with the stormwater system as designed.
Correct.
Relative to what's there today and going forward.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
It's important for, for Mr. Edwards to, to design it so that it would not increase with the peak or overall volume.
One other point too is that that is a requirement of the town engineer. The town engineer reviewed our calculations and seemed that they were adequate and accurate. So they have been reviewed.
I think that Ms. Pooley refers to that in her, that might be the supplemental one that uh she makes, Ms. Pooley makes reference to. Uh, her initial code review from, I think it might have been March of 2020. I know I was not involved. And then uh she, uh, Ms. Pooley did another supplement. And I think you might have been referring to that, Commissioner Braun.
Is this drainage system the same identical one that was in the prior one?
Yes.
So that, because there's no change in impervious, in footprint?
Correct.
There is a change in the number of units, but that would affect the sanitary sewer requirements, not the storms, not the drainage.
Correct.
And during construction, um, Ms. Pooley, she's retired now, this might have been one of her last reviews. She was concerned during construction because I guess the groundwater that you have to de-water while you build will go into the sanitary sewer. No? I thought that's what she said in her report.
Mr. Getz is gonna speak, uh, when he gets up. It's uh, he's got a plan in place for, for how he's going to deal with that.
Commissioner Brayman.
Um, so you said that um test pits were done um for groundwater, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and Ms. uh Pooley's comments were uh April 20th, 22, or one of her said in the comments. And she uh, she said that test holes should be done to determine depth of seasonal high groundwater and provide estimates needed to evaluate impact on sanitary sewer line. So the test pits were done after April 20?
I think we actually did them before that. She may have not have had that data.
Okay, so, so, um, so Ms. Pooley didn't, so the test pits were done before April 2022, but Ms. Pooley didn't have those available when she made these comments?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So um, I haven't seen, I, I haven't seen the data from the, the test pits that were done about groundwater. Um, so I'll just, I assume that's in the, the application materials already?
It, it should be, yes. If not, we'll make sure it gets there.
Okay, and so you said you encounter groundwater at 10 feet below what, what level?
Below the existing surface grade.
Okay, so at 10 feet below grade. How deep, how deep is the underground parking going to be?
I'm gonna let Mr. Getz answer that, cause I'm not positive. I don't wanna say the wrong elevation.
Got it.
Mr. Getz has got a lot.
Good relief.
Any further questions?
Thank, thank you.
Uh, so Larry, Larry's on remote.
Larry, Mr. Larry.
Uh, for the record, my name is Larry Edwards, professional engineer with J. Edwards and Associates. Um, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Getting everybody out there here. I see, yes.
If you need me to advance the slide, please let me know. This is Emily.
Okay, um, basically, I'm gonna cover uh the procedures and what we did in terms of um the uh calculations and approval process for the sewer connection um with this uh, with the Fairfield Sewer Commission. Uh, we started this back in the fall of 2020. And we had an original application that had 36 apartments and about 9,007, 9,077 square feet of commercial space. We had determined the um, uh, the flow from our proposed building, which was at that point uh would, would have been 5150 gallons per day based against the current uh flow from the buildings on the site, which was approximately 1,377 gallons per day. Uh, when we started that process uh at the request of the sewer uh staff of the sewer department and the commission, uh, they wanted us to look at our project along with three additional projects, two additional projects that were recently approved in the downtown area. And based on those flows from those uh proposed buildings and our proposed buildings, we had a total of anticipated flow of 460,932 gallons per day that would be going into the sewer connection where we're proposing to be, uh, connect our, our project. Um, that flow um represented a total of 79.1% of the total capacity of the eight-inch pipe that was existing in the street. The existing capacity being 5,008, 582,480 gallons per day. At that time, um, the sewer commission had concerns with the uh, the 79% capacity utilization in that they had a um unwritten guideline that allowed for um up to 80%. They felt that was becoming too close. And they requested us to look at upgrading the eight-inch pipe that was received, that was to receive our flow along with those other projects and um increase that to a 10-inch pipe. Um, that 10-inch pipe would provide a, a capacity of 1,161,864 gallons per day. Um, and that was obviously almost double the capacity of the eight-inch pipe. And um, that would have represented a total of our, the um total, um, our project would, all the projects together would utilize a total of 39.7% of that total capacity. So that would, that would provide extensive amounts of additional capacity for future development in the area. Um, they approved that um, application for the sewer connection with the condition that we provided them with schematic of what we were gonna do, um, which I think is one of the drawings, if you can just go to the one before or after this one in the, this was the schematic that we provided to the sewer commission, which showed what we were proposing to do um in expanding that eight-inch to 10-inch. So uh, with this schematic approval, uh, schematic plan, they um, it was my understanding they approved our uh connection um and our proposed uh additional flow that we'd be contributing to the sewer. Since then, as the commission knows.
Let me just interrupt with a quick question. Mr. Edwards. This is our, at least my understanding of the 2020 uh approval uh with, from staff. The WPCA provided conditional approval to accept that concept as presented with the condition to install a 10-inch pipe from Sanford Street to Reef Road, subject to DOT approval and permits, additional flow analysis and testing, and agreement from the utilities for the proposed plan. Is that a fair um state or representation of what the WPCA did for the, the 2020?
That is correct. Obviously, these are not gonna be finished drawings, but obviously, we would have to install the pipe. We'd have, in order to install the pipe, we would have to have uh DOT approval. And as far as additional monitoring, we, we have done that. That was something we did um in the last uh six months. And there is some um, uh, correspondence between the consultant uh for the sewer department and the sewer department, which indicated that based on our additional analysis that uh they would recommend approval of our proposal. So that's all part of, I think, what uh Chris Smith is providing with you, to you in the uh, whether it's already with you or will be given to you uh with any other modifications that we, uh, additional information we give you after this.
Hold on, hold on. Attorney Smith.
And, and if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, Chris Smith, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I know that you read from what Mr. Went had provided.
Yes.
And Ms. Aragon from the minutes uh from the December 9, 2020 WPCA meeting, which is what we've been relying on and referring to. Uh, so there was a condition to install the tenant section uh that would have, by multiples, you know, have so, a lot of capacity available. Uh, and then it was also subject to DOT approval, additional flow and analysis, and any agreement from whatever utilities might need to, to look at that. Subsequent to that, we did, uh, as indicated in Mr. Went's report to you, to the commission, uh, that we did uh submit a second application uh last fall. Uh, we were asked to do quite a bit more monitoring, which we did. Uh, and there was an issue concerning a spike in the flow that had occurred, I believe, with the 2020 application. Not with the new monitoring that my client did. Uh, but with the new monitoring, uh, we, we essentially, uh, and we can get all the minutes and I get to the video or the meetings and, and the letters that we sent into your WPCA. Uh, but essentially in January, your chair said that, uh, as we were saying, we, we had applied and asked for confirmation for the 63 without upgrading uh as required in 2020 as, as the condition of that approval, uh, which would have all that capacity available, which would more than accommodate what we've got now as far as what's being proposed to the commission. So our position is we do have an approval subject to that condition. As far as the additional testing, uh, when we did go back to your WPCA, uh, we did all the additional testing and we said, well, look, there's this, so we have this spike that you keep relying on from 2020. Uh, it might even have been for 2019, uh, where if you use that spike as the moment in time, where that's what happens all the time, uh, then we would be at a little over 80%, which is, it's not a, it's not an ordinance, it's not a regulation, it's just a rule that they use 80%. They don't wanna go over 80% capacity. Um, and we said that that spike should be discounted because obviously it's abnormal, it's abnormal, normally. Uh, and, um, and they said, well, look, we don't have the expertise for that in January this year. We're gonna refer it to Wright Pierce, who was our consultant's. They'll tell us if, if you're right on that. And uh, we showed up for the next meeting. Uh, so after that meeting in between, uh, you're uh, you know, I was waiting to find out and I contacted staff if, if they had heard from Wright Pierce. And I wasn't getting any answer. And then at that meeting in February, at their next meeting, when I asked if they had had anything from Wright Pierce, uh, there was nothing forthcoming uh from the WPCA. And then they voted to deny without prejudice. Uh, and then following up on that with a fair number of uh inquiries by myself, uh, staff did generate finally uh an email report from Wright Pierce that had happened just days after the January meeting, when we were told it was gonna be referred to them. Uh, and uh, it wasn't provided to us until after this new denial. Uh, and can leave copies with everybody if you don't have it, but it's um.
Is it part of the record?
I don't know if it is or not, but.
I haven't seen it.
I have copies.
I think it should submit it for the record.
And I'll, and I'll get it submitted to uh, to Emily, uh, Ms. Aragon, so we can. And I'll send the letters that I had sent in basically uh with our position. And in this, and I'm just gonna read uh item number four. So this is from Wright Pierce, it's a gentleman dentist, uh, divert, divert, and I could be crucifying his name, I don't know him. Uh, but he was responding to uh John Bodie and John Clancy uh from your uh, I don't know if they're Public Works Sewer or both, a combination. Uh, number four, based on the information presented, that we had presented with all this new data, uh, additional flow testing, the applicant has done their due diligence and any additional investigative work is not necessary. This is the expert that we were told WPCA was gonna rely on. I do not see any reason why the town should not approve these connections, even if the 279.8 gallons per minute is correct. That's that spike. Uh, the benefit of the eye and eye abatement will be realized in the system. It should be applied accordingly to offset these additional flows. So, and, and I'll let you review the rest. And he says, for example, there's, there's no capacity, there's less capacity concern downstream. And he indicated that it, you know, that 279, that spike, quote, "may likely be an erroneous reading. It can also be valid reading if someone was discharging excess flows to the sewer system from a, a upstream. It is likely not from infiltration. A groundwater heavy rains does not occur in the peak flows. It can also be from a rag or other debris caught in the sensor that when dislodged caused a spike," end of quote. And again, that was long before this second go-around where, was it seven weeks we did monitoring? I think we did an additional seven weeks uh this time around. And there wasn't anything. And then finally, when push came to shove, when they were like, well, do some more testing. I was like, we're not, we can't, can't just be doing this forever. I mean, we started this last fall.
Can you speak up a little?
We started this last fall, uh, I think we filed it in September. And I have the letters and I'll, and I'll put those into the record. And uh, so you're, you're, the WPCA's own expert said there's no more testing required, which was when you made reference to the 2020 decision, that was one of the items. So the only other items is if, if my client makes those improvements and upgrades it to 10 inches, there's more than enough capacity as approved. Uh, there's an existing main out in the street. There's a lateral that's already serving the property. So the sole question is, under our law, is there capacity? Cause there's no, we don't have to extend a line to service this property. We don't have to run a lateral in that's already, if the property is being served already. So the issue is, is there capacity? If we do the 10-inch, there's more than enough capacity. Uh, I think we demonstrated uh that even not doing it, there's capacity. And your own expert said that that's under appeal. But if my client does the 10-inch uh improvement, then, then we have an approval. That's our position and that's how uh, that's addressing.
Well, what is, your application then is what, proposing to do the 10-inch? Or to do this under the 2020 too?
Well, well, right now, there's an approval for, for uh, there's a confirmed capacity. We, if we do the uh, if my client makes the improvements, they have an, he has an approval, subject to the 10-inch being upgraded.
Well, cause that's my, that's, okay, cause for, I mean, you got the 10-inch one, which I understand your position. My problem is you have, you're using an older applica, older application, much less residential units. Could very well be within capacity, but this is kind of outside my, and even our wheelhouse, so to speak. Normally, you come with a, normally, applications come to us with approval, not conditional approval, but approval from the WPCA. So now you're 2020, you know, upgrading it from the, to the 10 inches, you know, with all the capacity, sounds great. But it's not, it's not in line with what we're normally seeing. It's, it's a, it's a conditional approval that, based on what you're telling me, seems likely to happen. I almost would prefer you have gotten the WPCA, or would you agree to a condition of approval that you would get? An unconditional, well, a non-conditioned approval from the WPCA to some extent. Cause that's, I mean, here you have a, regardless of what you just said about 2022, cause I, you know, it sounds good on your end, but from my point, it's, I got the WPCA denying it without prejudice. Meaning you can go back, but it's a denial, at least with 2022, notwithstanding the merit that you just went through. But then I have a 2020 conditional approval, which gives you. But then I have a 2020 conditional approval, which gives you the more, the 10 inches, which is great, the more capacity. It's saying, as Mr. Edwards said, my recitation is accurate, it still requires additional steps before it can actually happen. And it's for an application that's, I would suspect, a lesser usage than the 63 units now. So how do I, is it appropriate for me under 830G to approve with a condition, a condition of approval that you get, WPCA? Or just assume that, in order for you to do it, you have to get the approval, so I should just kind of ignore the issue?
No, it's, it's a good question, and, and, and again, the response is that we have an approval. My client has an approval, subject to doing an upgrade to the system at a huge cost of going from 8-inch to 10-inch. And we'll get to the data, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, that was, that's part of that approval, that Mr. Edwards did the analysis, and, I mean, there's, you know, some of those numbers that were thrown up before with the gallons per day, and that's what I, you know, that's what was being portrayed. With those improvements, with going to 10-inch, there's hundreds of thousands of gallons per day that's available for the increase of whatever it is.
And everything that...
More than 1,000 gallons per day, maybe, increasing from what was before, I'm sorry.
No, but the condition of approval is for the old application. Is, I assume the testimony, and I'm going to ask this of Mr. Edwards, is his opinion that this new application of 63 units...
Good question.
...is going to meet the capacity of the 10 inches? Because that almost seems, that's outside of my, at least in my opinion, outside of our jurisdiction and wheelhouse. And it may very well be the case, and you can show me two plus two equals four up there, but it's still outside of our jurisdiction, it seems more proper to have gone back and at least get the 2020 conditional approval, regardless of all the other things that, but I think need to be done, the additional flow analysis, testing, utilities, DOT approval, all that stuff.
For twice as many units?
Yes. But have gotten that approv, that conditional approval under the 63 units, as opposed to literally half the 36 units in the commercial space. So that's where I'm coming from with my question. Where do I, I mean, you don't have a conditional approval for this, this application, you have a conditional approval for a different application, so how do I handle that? Do I give a, do I have to do a condition of approval? Do I just ignore it because they need to, you need to get this, this permit anyways, and it's going to have to just happen? What's the proper way for me to handle this now? With my initial app, my initial, I apologize, my initial inclination is, normally, you come to me with an approval from WPCA, why, why am I being asked to insert some, my own judgment, that's outside, I think, the jurisdiction, the commission, and just outside the jurisdiction?
All good questions. You know, with the WPCA, there's essentially three different types of applications. One is an extension of the line to serve a property, doesn't, the line doesn't run by the property today, so you need to run it up to the property. The other is the line's out there, and I want, I would like to connect to it, have a lateral, so that's a connection. And then the other is confirmation of capacity, because you already have those things, you have those first two. So then it's like, is there capacity to serve? Or are you at 90% of your capacity, or 98%, and I'm going to tip you over, and you can't accommodate it? Or, the WPCA likes to use this 80% rule. If you go above 80, we have a problem. It's not 100, we get it, but we use 80. And that's referenced in this Wright Pierce report. So we went in, what happened in 2020, it wasn't an extension request, it wasn't an application for a lateral, it was...
Can you speak up a little, sorry?
It was, it was a capacity, confirmation of, that capacity's available, and that's, that's how I phrase this new one, it's, that's how you typically...
And that's all well, but even in those, even just trying to limit it to what the application is, it's hard for me to just accept because I'm not the WPCA.
So, so as, and I would, you know, talk to town council, but as Mr. Went indicated, he gave you the Riverbend decision, and essentially, the standard of approval is actually similar to police commission, removing parking spaces. Is there a reasonable probability that you can get approval? That's, that's kind of the standard out there, legal standard. But again, subject to your town attorney, I'm general, generalizing the standard, but that, that's it effectively. And, and here, again, we have an approval from 2020, saying if you, Dr. Forrest, do the upgrade, then you're not at the 80% anymore, that's what their concern was.
You're not at the 80%?
You're going to be down, you're going to be, I'm sorry.
So you're not at the 80% for the old application?
Capacity, forget application.
I know, but...
Different units, different capacity, and that's, we're, we're trying to address. So it's an increase, I can't turn to Larry, but Larry Edwards, but I, I think it was, was, I saw on the, some document, Larry, it goes from 4,000 to 5,000 gallons per...
It goes, it goes, it goes from 5150 to 9206, which is a 4,056 increase, but that increases the, the used utilization of the 10-inch pipe from 39.7 with the mixed use to 40.6 with the, with the affordable. So you're nowhere near that 80% threshold, you're half of the 80% threshold.
Thank you. That was, so I, I'm going to put that into what I think is our, my, our burden to the commission, is to demonstrate that there's a reasonable probability that we'll get approval for the capacity of the additional 5,000 gallons per day, because there's hundreds of thousands with the upgrade being done, that would keep it down at the 40% capacity of the system. I'm, I'm going to say the system, but I don't mean the whole system, but the system that the WPCA was concerned about, relative to the 80% rule that they used. So they said if it's at 80, if you got, if you're, if you want to do this at eight, eight inches, you know, you're just, you squeak over 80%, we have a problem with it, with the, with the mixed use, the prior application.
Yep.
The prior proposal, not to confuse the word "application." And, but if you do the 10-inch, I mean, it's going to be, you're not even going to be close to the 80. So our point is, when we go back in, right now, we have confirmation for that additional 4,000 and whatever, as, as you indicate, Mr. Chairman. And, but the five can more than be accommodated with that 80% rule that they use, we'll be at half of that with that additional five. So our position is that we have approval, that would cover that compromise, that would cover that small increase in capacity. If my client does the, the 10-inch, upgrades it to 10 inches, disregarding the present appeal, I mean, if we win the present appeal, I mean, it's, we don't even have to, we keep it...
No, and I, I get that, but...
That's not, that's...
Right now, you're coming to us with the 10%, excuse me, the 10 inches, because there's a pending appeal.
Well, that was, was, that's what was approved, if we do the, you can do it, but you got to have to increase it.
Are you, again, the question I guess I have is, should we be, because I got, obviously, I don't think you can build anything without sewer approval, permit.
Correct.
And that's just pretty standard, even if we were to choose to ignore it, you would need that for a building permit forward anyway, I would think. But I don't think it's in this commission's best interest to just ignore it, you mean, you need to have sewer approval, we need to go, if you don't have sewer approval, with us looking at what's substantial harm to the public interest, it just seems odd that we would just ignore it, so to speak, and go off the idea, well, they need to get it at some point anyway. I don't think that's what is in our best interest. Do we do a condi, would a condition of approval then be appropriate? That you get a approval from the WPCA, not a conditional approval, but just an approval? Now, that could be either from winning the appeal in the 2022, or getting it, because I, I suspect you have to go to, back to the WPCA for this app, this specific site for this application. We have to for all the other things that they ask for. So you have to get, you have to get approval from the WPCA at some point, right?
I'm sure there's final detail, whatever needs to be done with the next step, but again, there was a conditional approval with the upgrade, flow testing, which their expert says, with all the flow testing, we just, they don't, we don't need to do anymore. So that's off DOT and any utilities, which is really no different, think about it, special permit approval for a pharmacy approved, but we have to get OSTA or DOT, if we have to do any improvements on the road. We have to get, maybe there's a road cut or something that requires for a select person's approval, or the RTM, or somebody, and then we will have to get whatever utilities. If it's ever sourced, we have to do that. So I think WPCA is just making it clear, as you might typically say, you know, you got to go and get all your other approvals, because we know that you can't condition it upon another approval, but very often, the applicant says, fine, you know, you say, if you need Army Corps, if you need DOT...
No, I get it, but...
But I'll, I'll get back to you on that specific with a, with a proposed option.
Okay, because that's where I'm looking at, is it, would the applicant be amendable to a condition of approval with respect to getting a WPCA approval?
If I can, if I can, oh, I'm sorry, for the next...
No, but I mean, you don't have to answer me now, it sounds like you might want to talk it over, or whatever, and that's fine, but that's what I'd like to know, position, because again, I don't think we can just ignore it. I think there should be a WPCA approval, and would, is a condition of approval, I would think, appropriate, but I would like your opinion on it, and you don't have to give it to me now.
We'll get, we'll get a proposal for the full commission to consider on that issue.
Commissioner Levy.
I have a question, too.
Commissioner Levy, then Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah. So as I understand it, right now, with your, with the approval of 10-inch, if we approve of this project, you could break ground if you put it at 10-inch. Correct?
Yeah, I, I, Mr. Commissioner Levy, I'm not exactly, because I, I don't know for sure what, if anything, has to go to DOT, anybody else, and what has to go back, I presume there might be some final detail plans, but again, we have approval. It's almost like you were proving something, subject to staff reviewing, whatever has to be done is, is the follow-up. But again, we were told, you've got, you have capacity for what you're asking for, but only if you get it below the 80%. And we want you to increase the pipeline from 8-inch to 10-inch, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars, but if you do that, then by your, by all the information that was submitted to them in 2020, you're going to be well below the 80, you'll be, as Mr. Edwards indicated, somewhere in that 40% range, half of what their cutoff is. And then, and then, yeah, there's plenty of capacity for you.
There would just be the ministerial details to follow. And equally, might we condition our approval on your doing the 10-inch to protect the public interest in health and safety and water and everything else?
Unless we prevail with the pending appeal, we're presumably, as you have the right to appeal, if you're aggrieved with the WPCA decision, if we were to prevail there, then presumably, a court would say that spike gets thrown out, and instead of being at 81. whatever, I think, Larry, 57 or something like that?
Yeah, somewhere around there, I don't have that in front of me, but, but, but it's well below 60.
It'll, it'll be, it'll be above 40, but it's, it's pretty low, and that's why that spike that occurred, Lord knows when, way back in time, that everybody keeps pointing to, to address our application, is, that's why, that's that 80%, and that's why they kicked it out, the WPCA being they, to their expert, as to what do we do with this? And I, I think his response is pretty clear. You know, it could have been a rag, could have been anything, but these people are all right, there's no reason to deny it. Likely of winning, maybe, but that's not the standard, what we're looking at. I, I wanted to present to you the fact that we have this 2020 approval, where if that is done, correct. So I think in either case, to get a building permit, we would have to have that approved, one way or the other, by WPCA, just as we need the approval from you. If there were wetlands, we would need wetlands approval, too. But, but all good questions, we will, I will come draft something and get that to you to consider before the next, next meeting.
Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, thank you, and, and thank you. I had a question, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right. You, the WPCA, were they just asking for more flow data, and then you went down the litigation route, when they, when they made that conditional approval, or that, the denial without prejudice?
We had done seven week, you know, I, this is my interpretation of the events, so we had done quite a bit of testing, we were back in front of them in January.
Can you speak up a little?
We were back in front of them in January, and I, I was saying, there's really no need to do any more testing, there's no spike, this 279 spike that occurred with the prior application in 2020, it's not there, there's no reason for us to continue to just be testing and delaying this. And, and that, and then we, Mr. Edwards testified that, in his opinion, the spike was, you know, an abnormal, anyways, it was abnormal, and it was just a spike, something peculiar, a rag in, in getting in the sensor, as suggested by Wright Pierce, something happened that drove that. All the numbers are here, and then there's this one thing out of, I don't know, hundreds of, of these things. And all that information was supplied to the WPCA, and we were told something very comparable to what the chair said, by the chair of the WPCA, hey, we don't have the expertise to decide this. So we're going to refer it out to our consultant, and it was like, works for us, we'll be here in the next meeting in February. In between that time period, the staff there referred it out, and I read to you what, what Wright Pierce said, it wasn't disclosed to us until after their decision, even though we were asking for whether they had received anything from Wright Pierce, their consultant, their experts, and, and weren't forthcoming with it. And so we, we did take an appeal, saying that, that was suppressed, it wasn't given to us, and we were told that's what they were going to rely on. And here we have, and this is what it says. So, so that's in court, that's what happened there, we, and I don't want to get into, there was some conversation I had with the town attorney after that, but we had done quite a bit of testing, and we're told, just every time, we were just told, do some more, do some more, and we would do it, my client would do it, and it's not cheap, but at some point, it was like, I think maybe we're being strung out here, this, we started this in September, I think, of last year, and we started all this testing. And so that's what happened there, we didn't, we weren't playing hardball with the WPCA, and, and certainly, when I got this, I, I said to my client, I mean, you have to take an appeal, you know, I'm going to put that in front of a judge, and I think I know what's going to happen, because this wasn't given to us. I didn't get this until after the decision, but within the appeal period. That's why, that's what, that's the, the sequence for that, Commissioner.
No, I, I appreciate that, thank you. And then during the first round, I know before, I think you were counsel, right, there was conditional approval, if that, a new line was constructed, correct? That's just not feasible for you guys, is that what I heard?
Well, my client would certainly, if that's what he has to do in the end, that may very well be what he does, but then again, he would have to do that to accommodate the WPCA's approval from that time period, if he wants to build this development, or the prior one, for that capacity, under, if they, if he went along with the WPCA with that.
All right, there with me, I have another question here. And, I'm sorry, your first name, or your...
Jason Edwards.
Okay, sorry. I think you do some strudges. I guess, or I'll direct it to you, Attorney Smith, now, how will your client deal with flooding? I mean, I'm sure you've been to this area many times, I've lived in Fairfield for a really long time, and it is, it's a flood zone. When it rains, it gets flooded really bad there. And we know with, you know, with climate change, it worsens in the next 10 to 20 years. So how are we going to, you know, mitigate issues? I want to hear that, that, this is important.
Well, good questions, and certainly, it is. And I think what you heard from Mr. Edwards, and as required by your engineering regula, your regulations for the town, or regs, requirements, that, that there be no net in the peak flows and no net in the volume. So in other words, with what's being done on the property, with attention, with everything that's happening there as design, there, there's not going to be any increase in water leaving this property to exacerbate whatever, whatever situation there might be off-site on other properties, or in the neighborhood, in that area.
Yeah, just a quick anecdote, I knew the owner of the restaurant that's adjacent to that area, and they had a swamp running all the time. It is a water-prone area, there is no question there. And it, it's a big concern for me.
And that was, oh, I'm sorry, I thought...
No, no, I've done...
So there's two components, one is the, the surface water, right?
Right.
What falls on, are we taking care of that? And, and as indicated by your town engineer, now retired, boy, that hard word sounds good sometimes, who's now retired, that it meets the regulations, and that's what's happening, it's not, there's not going to be an increase with what's going on the property today. And then the other question is, are we going to have water in the basement? And that comes down to the building design, which Mr. Gads is, Gads is going to address. But, but those are two good questions, and legitimately, that, whether it was an 830G or not, those would be questions.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, the future is not on the coastline anymore, we know that. And I think adding more congestion to this area is not, is not going to, it's going to be bad, I really, I do, but I appreciate your answers, and thank you.
I understand that, I was just trying to respond to the water issue, stormwater and, and then flooding in the area.
Just to clarify that, to Jason Edwards, that's not actually in a technical flood zone, the FEMA flood zone is on the other side of the post road, so.
Yeah. Drive by there, sir, on, on a rainy, rainy day?
No, I understand what you're saying, I just wanted to the record to state that it's not in a flood zone.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a question.
Commissioner Berman first, then Commissioner Braun. So the, the application before us is based on the assumption of connection... So the application before us is based on the assumption of connection to, I guess, the Reef Road sewer system, because that's the conditional approval from 2020, right?
I don't want it, it's the Reef Road.
Yes, that's correct. So because the, you know, the connection to Anqua is the one that's subject to the appeal. That's the 2022 approval.
Well, if you go back to the, this is where, if you can pull back that, that one very sketch that we did.
You're right, sorry.
Somebody can pull that up.
All the sewer goes down Reef Road.
But I think the question is, is it going to the same place, this current one?
The, I was under the impression that the 2022 application to WPCA was for a different, connecting to a different line. Okay, it's connected to the same line without increasing the size of the pipe?
Did you get that, Larry?
It's going, it's going a different route, because we're coming, right now, the sewer from our project goes, would be southbound down the post road, then crosses back over the post road, and then comes down and comes into the little park area, and then comes into Reef Road. And part of what we're going to do is we're going to take and put the ten-inch pipe, picking it up in the manhole. Whoop, where'd you go?
Yeah, I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, we're doing it.
Why don't you, Larry, I think.
We're going to reroute it across the street, getting across the post road, is what the, the ten-inch will go in a different direction, but it goes from point A to point C by way of point B. So it's going to get to the same point, but we're just going to reroute it. And the reason we have to do that is because.
So Larry, is the points, are the points of the, the transport is what was applied for in 2020? Is that the same line? Wait, 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 is that the same, is that the same, what I'm looking for? Route, thank you, that's perfect, thank you, Commissioner. Is that the same route that was applied for in twenty, well, this past year with the 2022 decision?
Yeah, it's the one we submitted with our approval and as a condition. They wanted a schematic of where we're going to go. And so this is the one we provided them with that approval.
In 2020?
Yes. But the sewer, the sewage from this site is going to go the same way that was proposed in 2020?
That's correct.
I think that's what you were asking. It's going in the same place, one, I'm sorry.
It's going to the same place, but through a different route.
No, I think this, is it going the same route, Larry, except one is eight inch and the other one is ten inch?
It was never proposed to simply upgrade the pipe that's there. We had always, basically what there is, there is a high-tension conduit that goes under, along post road. And where the pipe goes now, as I said, the existing sewer now goes south, which if you're looking at the diagram, it would be to the right. It goes up the post road, comes across this, and then comes back on the other side and dumps into the same point you see the red, the blue line end. So what we're going to do is, in order to get under the conduits that are there, we are going to come down, with the, the ten-inch is going to come down and go across the post road in a different location and come back to that same manhole and Reef Road. So it's getting to the same pace. And this is the same way we proposed it in 20, we're not changing it. This is the same schematic that we had had in 20, and if we have to do it now, that's the way it's going to be, and that's what they approved.
Sure. Did that answer it?
So how practical is it to cross the post road with a ten-inch pipe apart the, you know, the 2020 conditional approval? And you mentioned, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. What is the cost estimate for that?
I can't give you that, but I can tell you what we did do as part of our due diligence to see if this was possible. We had a testing company test the depths of the, these conduits under. And it's, if you can see on this diagram, there's a whole bunch of them that go across there. And we did depth soundings across the post road to determine the exact depth of where those conduits were. And this is why we came in the direction we came, was because this was the place we could get under those conduits and still be able to get it constructed in accordance with town regulations. So is this feasible? Yes, it is feasible. I don't know what the cost is, and I don't know if the client has actually got a cost estimate.
And obviously, one of the reasons for doing the subsequent application to WPCA was to avoid having to do this, based on the 2020 conditional approval, right?
Was the upgrade, correct, yes.
Do, did the WPCA ever have before them the depth soundings data that you're talking about, about the other conduits and utilities in the post road?
That was all done as, that was provided with this sketch in terms of what the, what the data was, in terms of the depths. Yes, that's all available to them.
And that, but that's not yet in the record in this application to us, right?
Well, we will get it to you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Braun. Make sure we get on. I might be repeating what was already asked, but can you just answer this question anyway? The new, the new direction that you want to go, where you're going down post roads farther from where it is? Where was the original one? Is that just a continuation of Reef Road?
I can show it on the aerial if you want me to. I can trace it out where it goes.
And did you do a subsurface survey so we know exactly what utilities are in the new location? And is there anything else? There's no sanitary sewer line there now, I assume? You're building a new one?
Correct. This is Jason Edwards for the record. So the, because the pointer doesn't work on LED TVs, so lasers don't work.
Oh, it doesn't?
Lasers only work on screens. Sorry. So, yeah, so the existing sewer now, it comes up, there's a main running down each side of the post road in the sidewalk. So this sewer comes up to here, cuts across and intersects with a main that is coming actually this way and this way. And then everything meets here, comes down to Reef Road, it cuts across the park here, comes to here, and goes down this way. So.
Just, for the record, for the record, just do that again as best you can, just.
Identify where they are.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I.
So this is Sanford Road that I'm pointing, Sanford Street that I'm pointing to here. Sanford in the corner of Post is where, that's the intersection that the, the current main turns to the east and follows the post road on the north side, along the sidewalk, comes to the intersection of Anqua Road, crosses to the south, and intersects with another mains, two other mains, I believe, that come. One, one, this is still, I'm not sure if that's still Anqua Road there.
Old Post.
Old Post there. Intersects with this manhole at the corner of Old Post, and it also picks up this main from the post roads to the northeast that's moving to the southwest, intersects there, and then follows to the west and crosses over this park and lands.
At the corner of.
At the corner of Reef Road and goes to an existing manhole in Reef Road. That is an eight-inch pipe that runs all the way around there. What we proposed to do, and what was approved to improve the capacity, was to bring the ten-inch line from the manhole that exists at the corner of Sanford and Post Road, and then run along the north side of the post road, heading west to a, basically, we had to go west far enough that we got underneath this conduit in the road. And to answer your question on the subsurface, we did do vacuum excavations of the, in the middle of the post road to determine the depths of all the conduits crossing here. So we came to the west, then crossed the road where we could to the south. Yeah, the, it's, I don't know how far that is, but.
And then there's, is that a sidewalk?
That's a crosswalk, just past the crosswalk. Then over to the front of, this used to be Borders, I don't know what's there now, but the south side of the post road. And then we head back east to Reef Road, and then we come back to the same manhole that it existing, the existing line ties into.
And in Reef Road, does it go east like all the, like it used to, or does it keep going down Reef Road somewhere?
The main continues down Reef Road all the way down to the plant, basically.
And is Reef Road an eight-inch or a ten-inch?
Where I believe, I am ninety-nine percent certain that we are tying a ten-inch into the, another ten-inch there at that point. And it continues at a ten-inch down the road.
I would assume if it's an eight-inch, that would be a problem.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I, that's why I.
Is there a way of confirming that?
We, I can definitely confirm. I just don't have the plan.
So was it ever contemplated that instead of doing this ten-inch pipe, you were going to go across Anqua Road somewhere else? I read that somewhere. And that was, was that part of the original discussion with WPCA? That you were going to cross, not do the ten-inch to Reef Road, but do some other connection across Anqua Road?
That's where the existing flow is now. I mean, that's where the existing main runs, so maybe that's what they're referring to.
So the basis of the, so this was approved conceptually in 2020, but only to do, to see if it's feasible, that's my understanding from reading the opinion. So you could get before zoning on the 2020, and then zoning never, that was withdrawn, okay? It was never acted on by zoning. So now, since then, the size of the project and the needs for sanitary has gone from thirty-six units, which was thirty-nine bedrooms, to sixty-three units, which is a hundred and six bedrooms. That's almost, that's like a two-point-seven times increase in the number of bedrooms. Do you go by bedrooms or by units when you do these analyses?
Larry?
Do you go by bathrooms?
It's by.
You go by bedrooms. But the total increase, just to give you the raw numbers, the original application with the mixed use was fifty-one hundred and fifty gallons per day. The new layout will increase that to nine thousand two hundred and six gallons per day for a net increase of four thousand fifty-six. So there is an increase, but it's, in the overall numbers for the capacity of the pipes, it's a very small, small number compared to the one nine, you know, one hundred and sixty-one thousand gallon per day capacity of a ten-inch pipe.
And that's the difference from going from thirty-nine bedrooms and some commercial on the ground floor for the old app to a hundred and six bedrooms, all residential on the current app?
That's correct.
Yes.
And if we can get that slide, that Larry, with the sanitary sewer calculation review, it would be just after that.
After the sketch.
After the sketch.
And that's the one that was denied because the extra monitoring was not done. Now, their decision to deny that on appeal, that was done in February of 2022?
I believe it was February, March, I think it was.
And that was based partly on the fact that the first application was smaller and additional monitoring wasn't done, and at least that's what one of the WPCA commissioners mentioned. So that was denied because they determined it wasn't justified to approve based on this. But that was on appeal. And was that denied because you didn't want to go to the ten inches, or you didn't want to do the additional monitoring?
So what we did is, I believe it was September, and I'll get you all, everything that we filed, and we'll get you all the data. I believe it was, just bear with me, Commissioner Braun. We'll get you the entire, everything.
Is there some reason that's not in the package, the package, I mean, the packages are very big. I mean, this is.
We'll get you this official information if you deem it necessary, and you, and we'll get it to you. It's been expressed. So back in September of 2021, I'll get you the letter, we submitted a request for confirmation of the capacity. Our position was that we didn't need the upgrade, because there would be enough. And we went before, don't hold me, we went different times, and we were told to just keep testing. We want you to do some more testing. Put monitor, my client put monitors in, ran tests, kept giving the results. We gave the results to the WPCA. And again, and I'll, if I, if I can, we're going to download the video from that meeting. If we can, we'll get it to you, and you can look at the one in February. And tell me what you think happened.
Thank you. When did the monitoring, when was the last monitoring done? Was that before the February meeting? It must have been, because that's what.
I would think so. Larry, we'll get you all that data. We have it.
Okay.
We submitted it, we generated.
And I have a question about the spike. Do you know the date of the spike? Like, was it during the Super Bowl or something, or?
Well, we did look for rain events. Couldn't find any, because that would have explained.
The spike would be sanitary, so that would be uses of bathroom, wouldn't it, instead of rain? Would rain affect the sanitary sewer spike?
There was no, there were no rain events.
Well, why would rain affect the sanitary sewer spike as opposed to a storm sewer spike?
If it were infiltrating through the system. So if you had rain in the ground, right? Well, we all would like to think that our sewer lines.
That's kind of scary.
Are just run, right, without anything coming in or anything going out. But unfortunately, that's not the reality. That's what they call infiltration, right? So there wasn't any large rain event where it could have gotten into the sewer system to cause that spike. So something happened, happened in the sewer system. And as indicated by Wright Pierce, they had, they said basically, and you can read it, I don't want to.
Okay, I'll read it when I get it.
One example would be a rag getting caught on a sensor and causing it to jump that one time. And we'll get you all that other, all that data, and you can see when that spike occurred relative to the seven-odd weeks of additional testing, something like that.
And.
Wait, you have to identify yourself.
And in that report from 2019, there was, the company did outline that there was ragging going on. They identified that in the data.
What does that mean, rag, rag? What do you think?
Ragging, so some type of rag, perhaps toilet paper or something, came down the pipe and stuck to the sensor. And you can erroneously give a spike or give a dip in the data due to that.
So that could be one sort of assumption, or it could be that there was a spike from someone overusing the sewer up the line somewhere?
It would have been an massive amount of usage, like somebody emptying a swimming pool, I think it was.
That, my understanding, that, that could, that could be an example of somebody dumping an entire swimming pool into the sewer system, which might, might cause something like that to happen for the day.
So if it's a legitimate spike, not a monitor problem, okay? Like an issue with a monitor, misstating something? What happens if it overdoes the system? If it goes to, what could, what's the downside of what could happen?
I would ask, an engineer would have to answer that, but I think, again, your WPCA uses an eighty percent rule where they prefer, they don't want to have any of the sewer systems in this town, capacity-wise, go over eighty percent. So they want to have twenty percent.
Safety factor.
Well, safety factor, yeah. And that's, got it. Is there a regulation that says that? No. Is there an ordinance that says that? No. They just, they use eighty percent. With the prior application in December of 2020, when they voted in December 2020, I don't know exactly when, it was a different law firm. They were, the numbers came in at eighty-point-one, or whatever it was, was eighty-one point something or other. And they said, well, look, it's, it's right, actually, it's right up here. That's what this is. The first, the first two bullets there, with the existing eight-inch sewer line, capacity five hundred and eighty-two, I'm just going to, you know, round it off, a hundred thousand. The peak flow would be four seventy-one gallons per day. That would be at eighty-one point five. So with that four thou, with that five thousand fifty-one hundred fifty gallons that were being added, would get it to eighty-one point five. And they said, we're not going to approve that, it's above the eighty percent. But if you do the upgrade, well, there's going to be lots of capacity. And if you do the upgrade, that's the next number. With the new pipe at ten inches, that capacity, if you look at the top one, it more than doubles. It goes from, whatever, I don't want to be held to double, but goes from five eighty-two, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, to one point one six million gallons per day. So with our additional flow of that five thousand one hundred and fifty gallons per day, with that mixed-use development, that would bring that eighty-one point five down to about half of the eighty percent rule. So they said, hey, if you guys do that, you're at forty percent, we're good.
When they, when they do the monitoring test, where do they do it? Like, does it accommodate the fact that there's some condos that just went in up on Anqua Road, north of here? That's all in there? Where do they do the test, the monitoring testing?
Good question, and I'll let Larry Edwards respond to that. And we can get you all that data, because in his report that he submitted to the WPCA, he had in there, hey, look, you had this come online, this, this is, so we're going to include all these things, approvals. But I'll let Mr. Edwards respond to that.
For the record, Larry Edwards. The test locations, there was a number of them they had on various locations along, you know, that they specified they wanted them done at. I can't tell you exactly which one of them is at this point, but they were where this, the sewer commission and department wanted the test done. And as far as those other projects, that was, if you go back to that slide that we just had on there, the four hundred and sixty-one thousand gallon. The four hundred and sixty-one thousand gallon capacity that we were going to be at with our project and the four hundred and seventy-one thousand gallon capacity, included the other two projects that, one has already been built and I think the other one's under construction. It had, had the anticipated flow rates from those. But the other thing you got to remember too, this number is the number utilizing that extreme peak flow that we saw for one reading of one day. So we're taking the worst, worst case scenario to, to look at this number that we used in two, in 2020. And we still only came up to eighty-one point five. So with whatever we do forward and what we've, basically, we feel we verified since then is that that flow is far less than that. But even if it is, that one comes in once in a, you know, a year, there is still the capacity in the pipe that is not going to be a, a failure. It's going to be a little above eighty percent, but it's still well within normal acceptable standards. So.
And if it is a failure, if it is a failure, where does it go?
A failure is that the, the, the pipe doesn't have the capacity. It's going to back up the pipe for a period of time. And, and again, if it was all the time, then there'd be a, you know, a total failure of this, of the system. But again, the spike was a, one reading over a period of, I think totally, we probably tested for maybe three months total. And that spike came up once, never, never came anything close to it again. And so I think we have a pretty good feeling of security and that the numbers that we've used in our analysis are extremely conservative in the 2020 calculations.
Thank you.
And the spike is an anomaly is the big word I was looking for.
So you said you'll provide us with this information? That's great. Unless there's anything else that we can move on? Commissioner Francis?
The, the report also says that, once you get this ten inch pipe installed with DOT and utility approval, it is at reef, that there's not enough test data from reef down to Oldfield to the plant. Is that still true?
Well, that's a good question. And we'll get you the material and the report from Wright Pierce, where there's a reference here that there's even less of a capacity concern in the downstream sewers. That's his point number two. But again, number four was his opinion, and this was kicked over to him, referred to him, was that we don't have to do anything further. And I, I read to you.
And that may be true, if you're right about the ten inch pipe.
No, this was, this was what was before.
No, I mean that already existed reef.
The one thing is.
Exactly.
The additional monitoring that we did since 2020 took into, one of the tests they required us to do was down Reef Road to, to verify that, you know, we're okay getting to Reef Road, but then is there a problem down farther on Reef Road? That's part of the testing they required us to do, which we did in, in the latest submission to them. So that, that data will be all there for you to look at with what we give you in advance. We did that testing as part of their conditions that they wanted.
Capacity?
So Commissioner Francis asked if that, that passed or that accommodated, that monitoring on the Reef Road section, any issues there, I guess?
No, there was not.
And that's like ten inches, as Commissioner Vaughn indicated, eight to ten.
Anything else for the sewer or can we? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gedz with the building design. Is there a review?
Ten o'clock review.
So at the moment, we're, we're still doing well.
I think so. Who else? You have Mr. Gedz and.
Mr. Gedz, Mr. Sullivan with our traffic, and Mr. Verstieck, so.
I suspect we're not going to get the public comment though.
Probably. If we can't get through everybody else, then we'll just have them teed up for the next meeting.
Which is fine, but I just.
Request it in the meantime.
At nine thirty, it's fair to, I guess, to kind of highlight that I suspect we're not going to get the public comment tonight at least. Okay.
Oh, you're right, yeah. That's, sorry, it's late. Yeah, I don't, I don't anticipate us finishing before, much before ten o'clock. I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
I'm sorry. Are these, is this presentation in our package or will we, we get an email to us?
We'll get this PowerPoint in. John, I think you're going to have to.
Yes.
Over here. I can get out of your way. I'm boosted and I should be in my ninety day immune period still, I guess. But I'm not banking on every.
Members of the commission, my name is John Gedz. I'm president of Firmrose Companies and the principal in the architectural firm of Gedz Associates. I've been in the business of designing, developing, and building for the past forty-four years. Our offices are located in Bridgeport. I have five architects on staff, one structural engineer, five project managers, and two business administrators. Our business is designing and building buildings. We've been doing it for, as I said, for forty-four years. About four years ago, Dr. Forrest reached out to me with the idea that he felt his property was underutilized and asked me to take a look to see what the property could garnish. His first thought was possibly putting an addition on the existing larger building for the purpose of creating apartments. And after going through the various analysis, I advised him that economically it was not feasible. We then began the process of coming up with alternative designs. And about two years ago, two and a half years ago, and the design was finalized and Attorney Rosio's office was hired to put together a program to submit to this commission. And just to remind the commission, the, the application was filed. There was, I believe, tax change amendment. It was proposed. There was a site plan approval as well. And at the time, the reason why it was, the application was withdrawn was basically that the commission felt that they really needed to take a look at the overall business district and what the tax change would do to, to the others, you know, other properties. And as the time went on, there were numbers of meetings that took place with zoning officials and the, Reinhardt and Mayor and so forth for the purposes, seeing if we could come up with a compromise on the type of building that would suit the commission's idea of what they would want to see. Unfortunately, you know, after almost a year of going through that process, waiting for the commission to act on, you know, on the overall tax amendment for the downtown district, nothing came of it. And, and the decision that Dr. Forrest made was to go in this direction. So the, basically, the, there were some design changes that took place. At the time, the initial building, it was, there was criticism on it that it, it just was too much brick. There was, you know, there were certain, and so, and looking at what the proposed tax amendment or zoning change, regulation changes, what I did is I came up with a new design for the building, trying to mimic what the commission was looking to do. So I think, and if we have, and unfortunately, the rendering was not completed in time, but I'll have the rendering for you at the next hearing. But I think, I think we can get some elevations up there. But basically, the, again, the footprint never changed. However, obviously, the height and, and style of the building did change. And, you know, for the most part, as stated, the building, again, the garages, both lower level and grade level didn't change. However, the number of units and the, and the type of units on the upper floors did change. Wind up with sixty-three units, of which there's, we have forty, forty-three two bedroom, four one bedroom, and sixteen studio units. Basically, the, the apartments are pretty typical. The studio units average out, I think it's five hundred and twenty square feet. And then you have the one bedrooms and two bedrooms averaging from eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet. Now, the, the design of it, as I said, just changed so that it broke up the, you know, the massive brick, as was called. But basically, it's still pretty much within the same style. You have, because of the way that the decision was to go and the direction that we did with the A thirty-G application and as per the advice of, of Attorney Smith, the design of the lower level facade, the storefront facade didn't change. However, basically, the storefronts became amenities for the building. And if we look at the first floor, of the, can we get the first floor? Who's standing there?
I think, is it the slide before?
No, it's this one here. So if you, no, Emily, the previous one. Yeah, that one right there. So basically, we still have the spaces, with the exception that the spaces became amenities. You got a yoga, you know, studio, you have exercise room, and you have leasing office and so forth. So it's, again, it, you know, the storefront design is there, the use is not. And, and again, this, you know, had more to do with the legalities of the A thirty-G application than the desire for Dr. Forrest. Dr. Forrest would have preferred to have retail, you know, commercial on that, on that level. But again, going in the direction that we've gone, that's not feasible. So the, you know, basically, the, you know, as I said, the building configuration didn't change, the number of units, and obviously, the number of floors did. And the number of parking spaces just changed slightly. I think originally, we only had fifty sub parking spaces. This now has sixty, you know, parking spaces. And the reason is that the area of the previous commercial space was also downsized. So now, a lot of, a lot of conversation has happened, not just now, but in, even during the previous application concerning, you know, the how to build this building and issues pertaining to possible flooding or groundwater. And so I prepared a number of drawings, I believe they're part of the set, that took us through the scenario of construction, you know, the phases of construction for the building. Let me see, we have, starts out with A eleven. I don't know if you've got it there. Okay, starts out with A eleven. A eleven is the, basically, the demolition plan. We have five structures on site that have to be demolished in order to demolish it. Basically, the, the safety factors have to be taken into consideration. The proposal would be to have a temporary close down of the sidewalk and parking area on Anqua. This would happen for probably a period of a week to, to ten days to provide, again, safety for, you know, pedestrians. The main reason is because you, two of the main buildings face, they're on the property line on, on Anqua. The others are not as, they're not as, in a position where they create danger. But the idea would be that a, you know, the site would be fenced in with gates introduced on Stamford Place for access. And as the buildings came down, the entire site would be fenced. Now, one of the things that, that is a fact here is that the, some of the buildings do have basements. And therefore, the, you know, the issue of, you know, groundwater, you know, according to Dr. Forrest, he's never had any issue with groundwater on, on the basements that are in these buildings. But again, it's, the issue is not, it's the depth of, of the basements, obviously, that these, these are probably, you know, six, seven foot basements versus the ten foot depth that we have to, to deal with. But, so anyway, this is part of, of your package. So you're able to review it. And there's information pertaining to, you know, the process to accomplish the demolition in a safe manner. The next one is A twelve. And A twelve begins the, the sequence, there's actually three drawings associated with this. And it's the, basically, how to deal with the constructing of the foundations for the building. And there's, there's two factors. One is the, how to treat the groundwater in a manner, you know, the, if encountered, in a manner that it doesn't go out into the street or into the system. That's one factor. The other factor is how to do it in a manner that deals with the safety of the, of the banks, protection of the, of the sidewalks and pedestrians. And if you look at the building design, there's actually two foundation walls that I introduced. One is a shallow wall, the other is a deep wall. And if you just look on Anqua, you'll see the two walls. One is, one wall is adjacent to the sidewalk. That's basically a frost wall. The second wall is five feet away, and that's the deep wall. The reason I did that was basically so that, you know, we would have a safety factor. Now, in order to do this, both on Stamford Place and on Anqua, we would have to do sheet piling, you know, as a ma, as a way to, to secure the banks so that provides safety for the, not only the, the sidewalks and street, but also for the, the workers involved with the installation. So on phase one, it would encompass one third of the site. There would be a temporary dry well that would provide for the, the subwells that would handle the groundwater. It would be pumped into the temporary dry well. The temporary dry well would be located, you know, about thirty feet away from the excavated area. That section of the foundations would be installed. And then we would move on to drawing A thirteen, which would be the next phase. And again, the same type of scenario. You would, you know, excavate, install the foundations, again, have a temporary, you know, dry well. And, and then to the final drawing, A fourteen, which again would, you know, now the temporary well would be reversed and would be up by Donnelly's Walk, just behind the T. So, but yet, again, the, on this Stamford Street would also have to be a temporary closure to allow for the installation of the sheet pilings and the foundation installed and then removal of the sheet piles. So that would be the sequence of construction that would deal with the groundwater and the installation of the foundation. And then we go to the, the next drawing, which is A fifteen. And A fifteen would deal with the, the actual process of construction of the building. And again, here, we would seek city approval or town approval for the closing of the parking spaces along Anqua and any that would, I don't believe there's, there's any on Stamford at that location. But, and the reason again is because of, you know, loading and unloading of construction materials and, and other, you know, factors that there would be, the scaffolding that would be installed along the building on both sides, both on Anqua and on Stamford. The scaffolding would be set up with pedestrian protection, which would mean not only for pedestrians to be able to walk underneath the scaffold, but also netting and other factors that are introduced in order to provide protection, you know, from the, you know, from the work going on. And this process would probably go on for about ten months. You know, the. And this process would probably go on for about 10 months, you know, for the purpose of getting the brick installed and, you know, all the other exterior items that need to be introduced. So this would be the method of, you know, getting us from the initial phase of demolition to the building construction. You know, if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
The water in the dry well would be transported off-site?
No, that's just, the, actually, the, these soils are very porous, so they would just, you know, seep into the ground. No different than the system, if you look at the storm drainage system that Edwards Associates designed, it's similar. They have a galley system on one side of the building, another one on the other side. That basically is similar, is that it's, you know, it seeps into the ground.
Well, if you try to- at the very least, you would not be putting it into the drainage system. It would either seep into the ground, or you would transport it off-site.
Yeah. But again, it's the, my, you know, I've been building buildings for 40-something years. So, you know, we've done, and again, there's another drawing that I produced, which is a section through the foundation. I forget the number on it. But, you know, we've done buildings where the groundwater is down three feet, and yet our foundations were down, you know, eight, nine feet. And we did, you know, over at Afco Lycoming, when the engine plant was still there, we did projects there, and we were dealing with, you know, the tidal, you know, tidal waters-
And my question is less that, any kind of expertise, any thing of expertise, but we have been, I think, advised by our engineering that they have concerns about additional water from the site, either from the founda- in the basement or during construction being added into the drainage system because of capacity issues. That's what I want to know, is at the very least, you're not putting water from, that you get from construction into the drainage?
That's correct. That's why I created these drawings.
And that's fine, but that's-
So that's, it's basically to demonstrate that there is a method that can be used. The, you know, it's, you know, I go through this, you know, with a lot of similar projects. It's no different than building a swimming pool. The only difference is instead of keeping the water in, we're keeping the water out. But it's same methodology. Here, we need to have, you know, it's monolithic pores, you need, you know, gaskets wherever you have, you know, joints, gaskets, an eoprim, or, you know, so there's methods to use to prevent, you know, water from coming in to the, you know, keeping the water out. Now, you know, the, and as Jason Edwards pointed out, for the most part, most of the water that's going to have to be collected is from the roof. Because otherwise, you know, I mean, it's no different than in your garage where you're driving in. You don't have drains, but yet, you know, your car releases a certain number of snow and, you know, because again, it's, you know, you're coming from outside, you've got snow in the car, and that's the only kind of water that you, you know, ever have, you know, being brought in. The issue of, you know, flooding in the area, I can't answer that. All I can tell you is that I can keep water out. I can build this building in a way that doesn't bring water from the site into, or from the, you know, the basement or any of the other areas, like foundations, into the system in the street. And, you know, again, it's, you know, flooding in the area, well, if it happens, it affects everybody, so I don't-
I mean, are you designing it so that if there is flooding, it's diverted away from your driveway?
Well, again, it's the, right now, the only thing I have to go by is what Dr. Forrest has indicated to me, and that is that he's never had any issues in the basements of the buildings in town, which means that if there's any kind of flooding, it's not, because the site is not, I think the site, we're basically raising it, I think, six or eight inches, but it's not going to be any different than what it is now. You know, the rates are pretty much-
I have some more, but I've been talking too much. Go ahead.
So if I understand you correctly, your basement will be the equivalent of either a swimming pool or a boat?
Yeah, reversed.
Okay. Now, you don't know where the, right, you're going to be going down 10 feet, correct?
Yeah, our finished floor in the basement is pretty much, from what I gathered from the test results that were done, there was a back on-site, they dug deep test holes, and, you know, there were measurements taken, and I think the groundwater was an average of about 10 feet, and that depending on where it was taken.
Okay, and that's how deep you're going?
Right.
Whereas previously, it was 6 feet, correct?
No, it's always been 10 feet.
The existing basement is 10 feet?
Oh, I'm saying, on some of the buildings, there's six to eight feet, I don't, I'm not sure.
I mean, if the water table is higher, there's going to be water that otherwise would be sort of above your ground floor, which will no longer be able to go up, correct?
Yeah, but it's sealed, so it doesn't matter how fluctuates.
Okay, so it won't get into your building, but it'll then go underground to adjoining area, wouldn't it? Got to go somewhere.
It's, if there's groundwater, it doesn't travel, it's just there.
Well, groundwater, otherwise, would have been, let's say, the six-foot area.
No, groundwater, basically, there's a, you can go anywhere on any location, depending on the type of materials you have on the ground and so forth. Ground level, the groundwater will always be at the same level. I mean, we, you know, either Jason Edwards or Larry Edwards can, you know, answer that, but generally, my experience is that it doesn't matter where you are, whether it's your home or, you know, your business, whatever, within that site, if you're going to hit groundwater, it'll be at the same level throughout.
But what about for adjoining properties?
It'll be the same, same level. Like, whether you dig a hole and put something in it, it doesn't change the groundwater. You know, it's just, it doesn't, that doesn't happen.
Commissioner Ford? Anybody else?
I, you know, I'm a little frustrated because it's getting late. Sounds like we're passing the buck here. The Edwards said you were going to address water, and you're saying the Edwards should be addressing.
No, what I'm saying is that I-
Where's the water going? You dig down 10 feet, it's going to be displaced. It's got to go somewhere.
No.
And that's not, I just dug my driveway, and there's groundwater, and I had a piping bit that was going to flood my driveway.
How deep, how deep did you find that?
Six feet.
Okay. And it-
Costs me a lot more money. I had a remediation, the water, I disagree with your assertion that it's just groundwater there. But, you know, so if there's no answer, there's no answer. But the water's got to go somewhere.
And what I'm telling you is that within my experience of 44 years in this business, the groundwater is not displaced by this, the foundation of this building.
And it's further up the hill, right? So the property's down the hill, down Anqua Road, right? Aren't they subservient to this property? And they're going, if you're displacing water, and you disagree with that, so let's assume for the sake of argument, if water's being displaced, not going up, it's going to go down.
The amount of water that would be displaced, you're dealing in hundreds of gallons, not thousands of gallons. It's minute. Doesn't, and the overall scheme, it's minute.
It's a record, Commissioner Ford, I'm sorry, Chris Smith for the record. I think Mr. Getz was going to be addressing the building. Oh, the building and the water getting in, as it was referenced with some of the other buildings there. I think Mr. Edwards should be the appropriate person to respond to these other questions that you're asking.
And just for reference, my office is across the street, and I've been there for four years, so I've observed this as well. So I'm kind of a resident expert here.
Well, I know, I've never, I don't live there, so I don't, you know, I don't have the experience that you do on it. All I can tell you is that from a building, from building, I know how to build it, right? And I know what's required to make the foundation watertight.
I understand. I don't have that, and I know you've been at it for a long time, and I don't need to be disrespectful. The, but the neighbors, the neighboring businesses, in five years after this building's built, they have increased water in the basement, they're going to come to us and say, what did you do? What?
Well, the next meeting will focus on that.
Have you discussed it with Mr. Cleban, or, I don't know if it's Mr. Pollack, what their thoughts are, and maybe get some information about what's going on in the basement, if it's accurate, if there's, the sub-homes are running round and round. Is that an issue? Because the member we ran through, you know, it's an issue. I think that needs to be regarded out.
I have not spoken to anyone.
We will. Circle back. We'll circle back on your points.
All right. I see that we're at our, it seems at a good break point, let's put it that way. We're at our curfew, so the meeting will, is not being ended. You still have your presentation to go through, but adjourn the meeting for tonight to our next scheduled time, which is two weeks away, what, the 28th, right, Ms. Harrigan? Okay. So we will resume this application in this hearing at that time.
It's 6:30 in here.
6:30 in here, same location, same hybrid.
Just want to get that out of-
Yeah, no, no problem.
Thank you very much.
To the members of the public, again, once the application is done, we will go to public comment. You can, of course, submit your comments via email, which we always read, or you're welcome to come back again as you desire.
Mr. Chad, before we adjourn.
Yeah.
Is our agenda in any working order? Perhaps we might want to rule something off the agenda and accommodate-
I think we have addressed-
-not get through the whole of time in two weeks.
Yeah, I think we've kind of addressed that this, we, the next hearing is somewhat, what's the word, focused on this application. We have any other things next to-
Outside is maybe a few. Jim and I will review the, the review that's also pending, that might need some extra reviews, but I believe the public intention is to schedule any other public hearing. So whether there's something that might be more administrative or nature, we'll get back to you on that.
So otherwise, I think this application's going to be focused in the next hearing.
With you, everybody.
So that'll end the meeting for tonight, at least.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Was that in the recording?